What do you?
What did he say?
How are you doing?
How hard did you shoot today?
Very good, no complaints. You know.
For the back nine, yes. For the front nine, no.
I ended up with a birdie on the par three on the front nine.
I was going bogey. First par three, he was going bogey.
I was so whacked up on painkillers. One of my neighbors came in and said, "Is zoning board tonight?" I said, "No, that's next week."
Well, isn't that always...
He wouldn't have wanted to be, anyway.
First case is, um...
No.
You got your money's worth.
I guess so. It wasn't what I asked for, but that's what I got.
Lucky I had that.
So, everything all going with you?
Yeah.
Pretty good.
I'll walk by you again. That's right. That's the hardest part.
I've been off playing golf.
All right, we will open up. Welcome all to the Harwich Zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing this Wednesday, June 26, 2019. We open at 7:00 P.M. Here in the Griffin Meeting Room, Harwich Town Hall. We have the agenda as printed, and our clerk will read the cases one at a time. And the public will be invited to participate at the appropriate time. We are being videotaped. There's no one over there, but I guess it's recorded, and it will be up on the Channel 18 Harwich website tomorrow, or latest the day after, if you want to look back at it. Let's the boards introduce themselves, please.
Jim Hilliard.
Kathleen Muller.
Dean Hedersted.
Dave Ryer.
Al Donahue.
James Armstrong.
Mike Capoli.
And Shayla Delaney, Secretary.
I'll ask our clerk to call the first case, please.
Case number 2019-18. Gregory M. Soars and Barbara L. Soars, through their agent attorney, William Crowe, have applied for special permit or in the alternative of variance to demolish and replace a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The applicant is pursuant to the Code of Town of Harwich, Section 325-54, Section 325, Table 2, Area Regulations, and Section 325, Table 3, Height and Bulk Regulations, as set forth in Mass. General Law's Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Section 10. The property is located at 7 Seabreeze Avenue, MAP 6B, Parcel E1-18, in the RH2 zoning District.
Attorney Crowe will have voting on this. Mr. Hilliard, Ms. Muller, Mr. Hedersted, Mr. Donahue, and Mr. Armstrong. On this one, Mr. Capoli and I will not vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Crowe from Harwich Port, this evening, representing Gregory and Barbara Soars. Gregory could not be here, but Barbara Soars is here with me this evening, along with Dale Nicula from Encore Construction, seated behind me in the audience, the builder of the proposed project. So, I will...I have the first three petitions. I'll try to get out of your way early.
Before you get going on number one, do we really want to go forward?
We do.
It appears you have a 12-month...
We do. But if you grant a special permit, it's good for two years. So, we do want to go forward this evening.
Right, but if you change the plans, what you have to do...
We would have to come back.
You've got to come back.
We'd have to come back if we changed the plans.
Okay.
But right now, as of right now, the intention is to wait a year and then build the house that the petitioners feel is in subs...looks substantially like the existing house. So, with all due respect to the Historical Commission, they will wait out the one-year demolition delay. If they change their plans, we'll be back to the Historical Commission, and then we'll come back to you to amend the plans.
Okay.
But thank you for bringing that up. So, as I said, I'll try to, as much as possible, be your easy button tonight. This property is located down in the campground area. I submitted a copy of the assessors' map. It's at 7 Seabreeze Avenue. The petitioners are proposing to demolish and replace the existing, pre-existing, non-conforming single-family residence. There are plans, existing condition plans and proposed condition plans by Moran Engineering, and then the building and elevation plans by Encore, with the picture of the proposed dwelling, which retains the three gable ends appearance of the...as per the existing dwelling. The new dwelling, as shown on the proposed conditions plan, is basically going to be on the same footprint. It is squaring off the southeast corner, so it becomes a full rectangular house, almost square house. So, that will create a little bit of habitable space, 10 feet by...10.1 by 6.1 on the southeast corner. The front setback will remain at 2 feet from the property line, as shown on both plans. The northerly setback will remain at 20 feet. The southerly setback will remain at 10.4. So, as I said, basically on the same footprint, the rear setback will decrease slightly to 37.7 feet. The building coverage will increase slightly from 27.1 to 29.6, but still under the 30% maximum. The existing site coverage, which is at 40%, 5% over the existing site coverage, would increase slightly to 43%. So, the proposal is to demolish and replace the existing, single-family residence. There's a denial letter by the building inspector that says, "We have to come to you because of the increased inhabitable space, and we don't meet setbacks. We're pre-existing, non-conforming." We have the blessing of the Board of Health on this project, and we...our intention is to wait out the one-year demolition delay. So, our argument is that the proposed dwelling will not create a substantial increase in noise, odors, fumes, traffic, congestion, and the like. It will not create a nuisance, and there will not be a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood, and we would ask that you grant the special permit this evening. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hilliard.
I have no questions.
Ms. Muller.
I have no questions.
Mr. Hedersted.
I have no questions.
Okay, I just want to note for the board, this is one of those situations where, you know, it's down on the campgrounds, I think it's tight, so I think we need to put in the construction time restrictions.
I got that.
Demolition, construction.
Got that.
But they should run 2020 to 2021, because this year, nothing can happen. It's a one-year delay.
Say that again.
There's a one-year demolition delay, so they can't do anything until 2020. So, the restrictions need to be 2020 and 2021.
Got you.
Okay.
If I may address that issue, we could, because at any time, we could go back to the Historical Commission. We've done it in the past. Let's say we went back two months from now with a revised plan, and the Historical Commission says, "We like that. We'll lift the one-year demolition delay." They can't.
You have to come back to us with the revised plan.
And we could do that in 2019.
Then we'll put it on then.
What I'm saying is if you impose a condition at the end that says you can't do anything in 2019, I'm saying we could theoretically.
All right, we'll put it on for the three years, then. 19, 20, 21.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, that would work. Thanks.
Mr. Donahue.
I have no questions.
Mr. Armstrong.
No question.
Mr. Capoli.
No question. What's the rationale behind the 12-month...I know you're so used to me saying no questions. What's the rationale behind the 12-month, no demolition by the Historical Society?
You'd have to ask them.
Okay, I was just wondering.
I can't always explain everything.
No further questions.
Is anyone...is there anyone in the public that would like to address this petition? All right, hearing no one. I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Some move.
Second.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Discussion by the board. Mr. Hilliard.
From the presentation, I believe it meets the requirements of both our zoning bylaw and also the Mass. General Law's Chapter 48, 6. I have no other comment.
Ms. Muller.
No, I visited the property. I think it's beneficial to the neighborhood.
Mr. Hedersted.
It meets the Gale case requirements, and I think it's an improvement to the area, so no comments other than that.
I agree, meets the Gale case and 325-54, the bylaw, so I think a special permit may be issued by the board. Mr. Donahue.
I agree with everybody who has already stated it, so I won't bother repeating it.
Mr. Armstrong.
I too agree.
Mr. Capoli.
After a site visit, I agree with the board.
Okay, I will entertain a motion in the case.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, the Zoning Board of Appeals, this date, regarding case 2019-18, Grants Gregory N. Soars and Barbara L. Soars a special permit to demolish and replace a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application was made pursuant to the Code of Town of Harwich, 325-54, 325, Table 2, Area Regulations, 325, Table 3, Height and Bulk Regulations in accordance with MGL, Chapter 40A, and Section 10. The property is located at 7 Seabreeze Street, 7 Breeze Avenue, MAP 6B, Parcel E1-18, in the RH2 zoning district. Because the property is located in a residential area which is...has substantial conditions for traffic during any kind of reconstruction that they plan to do, the granting of this special permit is based upon no external construction or substantial landscaping would take place during 30 June 2019 through Labor Day 2021.
No, you have to do it one year at a time.
Well, okay, one day at a time. 2019, Labor Day through 2019, 30 June 2020 through Labor Day 2020, and through June...30 June 2021 through Labor Day 2021.
Could you just add demolition to that, that not just no construction and no landscaping, but no demolition during this period?
I said substantial demolition. That's what the words have to say. Sorry about that, but there's one other thing I need to say. It's based upon the applicant's submitted documents for the planned alteration or reconstruction or of non-conforming, single-family residential structure. That is, in accordance with the Gale case, and that no new conformity, and there will be no resulting substantial detriment to the neighborhood. And I continue with the fact that no construction or substantial demolition will occur during the period specified.
Could I have a second, please?
Second.
No, you're not voting.
Second.
Mr. Armstrong. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, special permit granted.
Thank you.
Mr. Soars, would you like this plan back?
Sure.
I was back gassed.
Oh, it's okay.
Well, hello. How are you?
Case number 2019-19. Mary T. Moran, is that correct, Moran or Moran? Moran.
Moran.
Moran. Mary T. Moran, through her agent, Attorney William Crowe, has applied for special permit or in the alternative of variance to construct additions to a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-54, Section 325, Table 2, Area Regulations, as set forth in Mass. General Law's Chapter 40A, Section 6 and 10. The property is located at 30 Grayneck Lane, MAP 11, Parcel X8-4, in the RH-1 zoning district.
Okay, Attorney Crowe, voting on this case will be Mr. Hilliard, Ms. Muller, Mr. Hedersted, Mr. Donahue, and Mr. Capoli. Mr. Armstrong and I will not be voting. If you could introduce yourself for the record, please, and who is with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Crowe, representing Mary Moran this evening, the owner of the property. I have Dave Veelinturf with me, who's the builder on the proposed project. The Moran's could not be here this evening, as they are traveling. This property is located in West Harwich, between Route 28 and Lower County Road, off of Grayneck Road, and it's on a side street called Grayneck Lane. We're not proposing to demolish and replace this house. We're proposing to put an addition on the back side, together with a deck, and then square off the front corner, as you can see from the proposed conditions plan by Moran The front setback will remain the same at 19.5. The rear setback also will remain conforming at 20.1, 20 feet being the setback. The easterly setback is presently non-conforming at 16.6, and will be increased by a tenth of a foot to 16.5 on the corner of the proposed addition, the northeast corner. The westerly setback is presently non-conforming, increase slightly from 14.6 to 14.4. Depends on how you look at it, it's decreasing the distance to the lot line. So, it's coming on both sides, a tenth of a foot closer on the east, and on the west, two tenths of a foot closer to the lot line. That puts us in under the purview of the Gale case, because we are intensifying an existing nonconformity. So, in accordance with the findings of the Gale case, our argument is that the addition and the deck and the squaring off of the corner would, again, not create a substantial increase in noise, traffic, odors, fumes, congestion, would not create a nuisance, it would not constitute a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood. The building commissioner issued a denial letter, saying that we're too close to our setbacks. We're a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family residence, so that we're asking for a special permit for the reasons previously stated this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Hilliard.
I have no questions.
Ms. Muller.
I have no questions.
Mr. Hedersted.
I have no questions. I have no questions. I think it meets the requirements of the Gale case and 325-54, just as Attorney Crowe said, intensifying pre-existing nonconformities, creating no new nonconformities, and certainly no substantial detriment to the neighborhood by these improvements.
Mr. Donahue.
I was just curious, the outdoor shower is going to remain in the same spot, or is it going to become part of the parcel for the deck? Let's see. It's not...
It's just off the existing deck right now.
Right, that's going to be removed. Undecided whether there'll be a new one or not.
Thank you. Mr. Armstrong.
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Capoli.
No questions.
Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak to this petition? Hearing no one, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Ms. Muller with Mr. Hedersted, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, discussion closed. Board discussion, Mr. Hilliard.
I believe he meets the requirements of the...not only the town bylaw, but also the state statute.
Ms. Muller.
I agree with Mr. Hilliard.
Mr. Hedersted.
Is there enough, or is there not enough, construction going on at the time to limit the time period in which the work will be done because of traffic, et cetera?
Yes. We put a restriction on another house on the same street last month, and there's another house under construction.
If you look at the plan, there's no real area for parking there.
Okay.
So, I think we should.
So, restriction for this year, or you get it, you need to have it for next year also?
The plan is to start right after Labor Day.
This year.
This year, and it'll take three to four months.
Okay, so you don't need a restriction for this year or next year.
Well, for next year, in case it runs over, or they don't start on time.
I don't know.
Feel free to say no, nothing next year, from June 30th to Labor Day, if you want.
Of this year.
Of 2020. You can say this summer also. We're not going to get through the appeal period and get our building permit and so forth anyway, but if you want to say nothing until after Labor Day, that's fine.
Both years.
Go for it.
Belt and suspenders.
All right.
Mr. Donahue.
I think it meets the Gale case, and it certainly is an enhancement to the neighborhood.
Mr. Armstrong.
I agree.
Mr. Capoli.
I agree with the board.
I'll entertain a motion in the case.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, the Board of Appeals hereby grants, under case 2019-19, a special permit to Mary T. Moran, to construct an addition to a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of Town of Harwich, 325-54, 325, Table 2, Area Regulations, set forth in MGL 40A, Section 6, and Section 10. The property is located at 30 Grayneck Lane, MAP 11, Parcel X8-4, in the RH1 zoning district. This approval is based upon the applicant's submitted documents for planned alteration or reconstruction or addition to a non-conforming, single-family residential structure. That is, in accordance with the Gale case, and that there is no new nonconformity, and there will be no resulting substantial detriment to the neighborhood. Because the property is located in a close residential location, there can be no substantial demolition, external construction, or subsequent substantial landscaping during the period 30 June 2019 through Labor Day 2019.
And same period.
And for the same period during 2020.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second, Mr. Capoli. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, special permit granted.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Sir, would you like this plan?
Okay, Mr. Hilliard, if you could call our next case, please.
Case number 2019-20. John J. McCarthy and Paula A. McCarthy, through their agent attorney, William Crowe, have applied for a special permit or in the alternative of variance to demolish and replace a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The applicant is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-54, and 325, Table 2, Area Regulations, as set forth in Mass. General Law's Chapter 40A, Section 6. Property is located at 96 Miles Street, MAP 22, Parcel X12, in the RL zoning district. We have one letter to the Zoning Board of Appeal from Ms. Taglia, from the senior health agent. She's reviewed the application. The system was...septic system was installed in 2006, designed to accommodate three bedrooms. Proposed new dwelling still meets the required septic system setbacks. The floor plan shows only three bedrooms proposed. The health department has no concerns about the proposed plan. It is important to note that passing Title V inspection will be required prior to building permit application approval. No new variance as to Title V of the Board of Health regulations will be considered.
Attorney Crowe, if you could introduce yourself, and who's with you at table for the record, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Crowe from Harwich Port, and I'm representing Mr. and Mrs. McCarthy this evening. They could not be here, but their builder, David Handren from Handren Brothers, is here with me this evening. This is John and Paula McCarthy, are the property owners. The property is on Miles Street in Harwich Port, near Grassy Pond Road, and we have an existing conditions plot plan and a proposed conditions plot plan by Moran Engineering. This one is a proposal to demolish and replace the pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family residence. The new dwelling, as you can see, is moving over to the right, to the east. So, it will...the new dwelling will remain conforming to front and rear setbacks, and the westerly setback, that is presently non-conforming at 12.2 feet, I'm happy to say, will become conforming at 20.1. So, don't condemn us for creating a new conformity, all right? The easterly setback is presently non-conforming at 16.8, so we're moving it over, so we're coming a little bit closer to the easterly lot line, to 15 feet. But we're gaining eight feet on the other side, so I think there's a net gain to everybody there. The building coverage will increase somewhat from 13.8 to 14.1, but still less than the maximum of 15%. Site coverage will go down slightly from 30% to 29.5%, but the...that is making it a little bit more conforming as to...because it's site coverage. So, we again have a denial letter from the building commissioner, and who indicates that we don't meet all the setback requirements under the current code, so we're a pre-existing, non-conforming dwelling and need relief from this board in the form of a special permit. Again, under the Gale case, we're increasing the existing nonconformity on the easterly side. Again, under the Gale case, we're increasing the existing non-conformity on the easterly side, going from 16.8 to 15, and that would require a special permit relief in accordance with the Gale case. Our contention is, again, it would not constitute a substantial increase in noise, fumes, odors, traffic congestion, and the like, would not create a nuisance, and would not constitute a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood. We'd ask that you grant the special permit this evening. Thank you.
Okay, Attorney Crowell, in this case, we'll have voting, Mr. Hilliard, Ms. Mueller, Mr. Hedersted, Mr. Donahue, Mr. Armstrong. Neither myself nor Mr. Capoli will vote on this case. Thank you. Okay, why don't we start on this side, Mr. Capoli?
I have no questions.
Okay, Mr. Armstrong?
No questions.
Mr. Donahue?
Just a question with regard to the height of the new construction. I didn't, I think I missed it on the plans.
Less than 30 feet.
It's all I can give you, Mr. Donahue.
Okay, it's out of the plans, though.
But the requirement, as you know, we have to be less than 30 feet, and we will be. Some of the architects, designers show it, and some don't.
I have no further questions. Yeah, I think this proposal, like the last two, meets both the statute, the bylaw 325-54, I want to reverse those, as well as the Gale case. No new non-conformities, intensification of a few of the existing non-conformities. I do not think it poses any substantial detriment to the neighborhood. I think it'll be consistent with what's there on Miles Street. Mr. Hedersted?
I have no questions.
Ms. Mueller?
I have no questions.
Mr. Hilliard?
I have no questions. If I'm looking at it correctly, you're actually decreasing four of the non-conformities. And that's...
Making them better.
That's a good thing.
We're making them better.
Yeah, making it better by decreasing the non-conformity. Thank you. That's, no further.
Okay, probably we're going to need the construction time restriction on this one also, on Miles Street there.
Going to need it for two years or just one year?
Probably.
Two years.
Two years?
No harm.
Probably, yeah. Because we're already reaching July, so yeah. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this application? Hearing no one, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Hedersted, seconded by Ms. Mueller. Public hearing closed. Board discussion, Mr. Hilliard?
I have no comments.
I have no comments.
Mr. Hedersted?
My only concern, and it's nothing major, but I think it should have been noted, that the building height had to be not to exceed 30, and they had plenty of room to put it in, and they did not. So my comment is, I would like to add that to the notes, that the build, that the construction plan was not more than 30 feet in height.
Okay.
Unless there's objection.
I have no objection, that's what the bylaw requires, anyway.
Thank you.
Okay, I've already made my comment. I think this qualifies for a special permit, and why, Mr. Donahue?
I agree. It fits the special permit, and also the Gale case, which is the determining factor, and it will be an enhancement to that neighborhood as well.
Mr. Armstrong?
No comments.
Mr. Capoli?
I agree with the board.
I'll entertain a motion in the case.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. The Board hereby grants, under Case 2019-20, a special permit to John J. McCarthy and Paula A. McCarthy. A special permit for, to demolish and replace a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application was made pursuant to the Code of Town of Howard, 325-54, and 325 Table 2. Area Regulations Set Forth in MGL, Chapter 48, Section 6. The property is currently located at 86 Miles Street, Map 32, Parcel X-1-2, in the R1 zoning district.
Wait, no, did you say 96 Miles Street?
86.
No, it should be 96 Miles Street.
It says 86 here. Am I have a problem? Wait a minute.
96.
Well, okay, 96 Miles Street, you got it.
And it's the RL zone.
Yep, Map 22, XL-2, in the RL zoning district. Am I getting old or what?
No.
Okay, thank you. This approval is based upon the applicant's submitted documents for planned alteration, reconstruction, in this case, demolish and replacement for a single-family residential structure that is in accordance with the Gale case, and that no new non-conformity, and there will be no substantial detriment to the neighborhood. There is, because of the property's located in a very tight neighborhood from a travel and parking standpoint of view, the property will have no substantial demolition or reconstruction or substantial landscaping during the period 30 June 2019 through Labor Day 2019, or the same period for the subsequent year.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
I'm sorry. And an amendment, and that the documentation should reflect that the home will no longer be, will not exceed height in 30 feet, 30 feet in height. In accordance with the town bylaws.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Ms. Mueller, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Permit granted.
Thank you very much for all your time and consideration.
Mr. Handren, would you like these?
Do you need any of these?
Thank you for not answering. We're on TV, Mr. Hedersted.
I know.
We'll see you next month, I guess, Attorney Crowell.
It's in the right place.
Yeah, well, it's location. Thank you. I have, evening.
Evening.
That's good, go ahead. Thank you. Thanks.
Doctors in every state get you things.
Okay, Mr. Hilliard, if you could at least call our next case.
Case number 2019-21. 541 Main Street LLC, Justin R. Brackett, Jared G. Brackett, managers to their agent attorney, Raymond H. Tomlinson Jr., are appealing a non-enforcement by the building official regarding an encroaching, non-conforming structure at the abutting property known as Perks, 545 Route 28. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, Section 325-45, Section 325-48, in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 7. The property in question is located at 545 Route 28, Map 14, Parcel U-8, in the CV zoning district. We have one piece of correspondence from the Ms. Eldridge Health Director. "I reviewed the notice of appeal submitted by Attorney Tomlinson regarding the outdoor bar constructed at the Perks property located at 545 Route 28. The narrative addresses the history of the property, including the involvement of the Board of Health as far as septic system and food service permits. The history in regards to the Board of Health decisions and approvals is correct."
That's it. Okay. Attorney Tomlinson?
Yes, sir.
Okay, before we get going, voting on this case will be our five regular members, Mr. Hilliard, Ms. Mueller, Mr. Hedersted, me, and Mr. Donahue are two alternates. Mr. Capoli and Mr. Armstrong will not be voting.
Fair enough.
Before we get going, I know we've got several attorneys here, and I know you and Attorney Toronto Flores, if she's here, have submitted extensive letters. So I think it would be helpful, you know, you can kind of summarize the main points, but not go through everything that we've already had the chance to read in depth.
I'm happy to do so.
The final comment I make, I know there is already litigation concerning this matter, so as we go through this, if there are any questions to anybody, I'd like you to ask me the question, and then I can, you know, try to get the answer for you.
We certainly are not going to use this.
We don't want to do discovery on the other case here. We just want to address this appeal matter.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman.
If you could introduce yourself for the record.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Ray Tomlinson. I'm here on behalf of Griff and Judd Brackett, who are the owners of 541, of the Port Restaurant, which is the real property located at 541 Route 28, is owned by the Limited Liability Company. You have, I'm not here to use this forum as a vehicle to obtain any discovery. We actually have a very narrow and discreet issue for the Board's consideration tonight. I'm going to pass some photographs that I would like for each of you to look at. In short, this is, the first photograph is a picture of the outdoor bar that was constructed in the, sometime in the summer of 2015. That bar is located to the rear of Perks property. It's owned by the 545 Main Street Real Estate Trust. And the trust, or its tenant, Perks, constructed that bar without any permits. It houses, I believe, I haven't physically seen or touched the bar myself, but I understand that it houses four commercial outdoor kegerators that store and warehouse upwards of 16 beer kegs. There are 16 tap handles that are serviced off of the bar. The bar is about 15 feet wide. Subsequent to 2015, now that bar apparently is not fixed to the property. It was sitting previously on shelves. Within the past month, there has been an effort, as a result of some of the ongoing litigation, that involved the encroachment of the back part of the bar, which is essentially the storage and display for the liquor. So the front part of the bar is storage of keg beer. The back part of the bar is storage of liquor. In addition, the back part of the bar also supports flatscreen TV, cable for the television, electricity. There also appears to be a refrigerator unit built into that back part of the bar, as well as a chest to hold ice and some stainless steel containers that I assume hold lemons or limes, or something like that.
Have a question before we pass these on.
Okay. I have a question. You've given us a picture of the bar with the fence in the background and a canopy over it. The next picture I get is a picture of the bar being attended, but it's got a hard copy of something over the top of it.
May I see the photograph? Oh, so the first photograph, the larger photograph, is in, yes, in your left hand, that photograph is, as the bar was originally constructed, just the main or the front part of the bar.
Ah, okay.
In 2015.
Okay, and the next one, that has the hard, it has the, obviously, it has a location for the liquor.
It does, it has shelves.
As well as a cover.
It does, it has a...
It's a fixed cover.
It is a permanent roof that covers a portion of the employee area between the main bar and the back bar.
Okay, I was just questioning that, because I didn't see anything else in these pictures that showed that difference, so thank you.
I appreciate that.
I appreciate it.
That's all, thank you. Subsequent to 2015, the back portion of the bar, which is referred to in the plans that you've received from the trust, is referred to as the TV stand. That TV stand was erected, the back part of the bar was erected, at some point after 2015. It's unclear. I believe it was 2017, because I photographed the part of the bar as it was being constructed. I do not know if the back part of the bar was constructed in phases, but in 2017, the roof structure and the uprights and the framework for the roof structure were being, were erected in 2017. This, that structure, that building also was not permitted. The building official is here today and can speak to the permit history. My understanding and review of the building file is that in 2018, after the town cracked down on several establishments that had outdoor bars, my clients included, had asked the establishment owners to go through site plan review, essentially. The trust submitted an application to the building official, to the building department, for what was termed "extension of the existing bar." However, the existing bar was never permitted, and the building official refused to grant the permit and set it down for site plan review. That never occurred, and the application was abandoned. So at this point in time, we have a main bar, the rear extension of the bar, the roof structure, the kegerators, power, electricity, plumbing, supply lines, drain, and a structure that previously was installed on the rear property line, the rear, within the rear setback, and physically on the rear property line. As a result of site plan review before the planning board, it was discovered that that portion of the bar encroached my client's property, and then there was an effort to uproot and move it to within three to four inches of the property line. So it's no longer encroaching. That issue, at the time the appeal was filed, that issue has been resolved, as far as the encroachment is concerned. The relief sought today before the Board is to essentially order the building official to exercise his power, his mandatory power under the bylaw, to essentially issue a cease and desist for the use of the structure, the building, that is not permitted and does not comply with the bylaw. And so, my argument is, my interpretation of the bylaw is that the rear portion of the bar is a fixed structure. It is anchored to the ground with two-by-fours, and if you take a look at the submission from the trust, which has a photograph attached to the back, you will notice at the bottom of that photograph, the four-by-four upright supports that support the roof for the back of the bar are cleated into the ground with two-by-fours, at least on three sides there. So it's unclear what supports the roof structure, and I would submit to you that an application to the building official would ascertain whether that is a permanent fixed structure, whether or not it's safe, whether or not the plumbing and electrical to both of these, these building structures is to code. And I would submit to you that the trust wants to call this simply as a TV stand. The building official has submitted a letter indicating that his interpretation of the bylaw is that this rear portion of the bar with the roof structure that supports the liquor and has the ice chest and the bins is a quote-unquote "fence," or a quote-unquote "other enclosure." And I would submit to you that the bylaws are very clear. The definitions in the bylaws are very straightforward. There are essentially five definitions that apply to this. The first is, this board needs to determine whether or not that's an accessory building. I mean, the lot is pre-existing, non-conforming. It was erected as a residence in 1788, subsequently converted to a two-family, and has experienced intense growth to now a restaurant that serves takeaway food and has this outdoor bar structure. The issue for the Board is whether or not the building official is obligated, under the bylaw, to enforce the lack of a permit on this particular structure. And I would submit to you that there... I will submit to you that I agree that the front portion of the bar is within five feet, or I should say, outside of the five-foot rear lot setback, okay? But the rear portion of the bar, the extension of the bar, which by the way is connected to the front portion by a continuation of the countertop, you'll see in this photograph, there's a drop-down countertop that is securing part of the rear bar. The roof structure serves to shelter and protect the employees that work there. It protects and shelters the flatscreen television. It shelters and protects the liquor that is a good, a retail good that is sold by the establishment. And pursuant to the bylaw, under the definitions under 325-2, an outside display for retail sales, which this shelving plainly displays the liquor... sales, which this shelving plainly displays the liquor that is sold by the establishment, must be within, you know, it cannot be within the rear setback. That's pursuant to 325-2. Likewise, this structure, this roof structure does, it is a fixed location, it supports the roof, and it's a combination of materials under the definitions of the bylaw, 325-2, that define structure. Likewise, a building is any portable or fixed structure or forms a structure that offers shelter of persons or property. And that is plainly what this building structure does. And so the notion here is that we don't have any objection to Perks operating an outside bar. We simply ask that the board instruct the building official to ensure that the code is followed, that permits are applied for, if a special permit or variance is required, it is brought to the attention of this board, so that that process can occur fairly and promptly. Because the construction that is ongoing at this bar, it's, I mean, we are talking a stone's throw from my client's property, and it does affect my client's business as well. So we're not here to obstruct or hold up, contrary to the allegation, we're not here to obstruct or hold up their business. We're simply asking that the bylaw be applied fairly and that determination by this board that that structure, the rear portion of the bar, is a fence or another enclosure, simply defies logic. And fence, neither fence nor enclosure are defined under the bylaw, but Oxford's dictionary, Black's Legal Dictionary, if you look at the plain meaning of what is an enclosure, it's a paddock, it's a corral, it's a fence. Nothing about this structure, which has power, has cable, is permanently affixed to the ground, is part and parcel of the entire bar assembly. And that entire bar assembly is plus or minus 138 square feet. It is not a small, it is not a small building structure. I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Why don't, well, let's start with Mr. Hilliard. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So your issue is, it's one issue. It's whether or not the town building inspector has defined structure consistent with what your opinion is of what the definition is in the bylaw. And therefore, because of what we're calling a structure, you're referring to it as a structure at Perks', is a structure by definition?
Yes and no. I think the building official is defining, he's essentially agreeing that the front portion of the bar meets the five-foot rear setback within the overlay.
Do you agree with that or disagree?
I agree with that. I agree with that. Whether it's temporary or fixed is, in my view, not relevant, because the bylaw provides that a structure can be portable or fixed.
Okay.
So the front, the front bar structure, the main bar structure, is outside of the five-foot setback. We don't have an issue with that. The issue lies in the rear structure, you know, that the, essentially the roof structure that they're referring to as a TV stand. That is four inches from the property line. It was moved, it was over the property line, but within the past month was relocated to within four inches of the property line. And both the trust and the building official are trying to, in my view, take an unreasonable or tortured view of the term "fence" or "enclosure" to avoid what is plainly a building and a structure and has power and services the commercial use of the property.
So your, your argument is that the building official has looked at what you consider to be a structure as a fence?
Yes.
Okay. And fence is not defined in the bylaw.
Correct.
Which leaves out a problem, although I think the imagination doesn't have to go far to figure out what a fence is.
Correct.
And the specifics of your definition have to do with the television stand or what it's attached to?
All fair questions. What we're referring to as the television stand is, by my understanding, a pair of four-by-four pressure-treated uprights that are fixed in the ground.
Okay.
Have a wall structure that supports a television, also has shelving that store and display the liquor.
Okay.
There's also a set of cabinetry on the front of that panel between the two supports.
And that's attached to those supports?
That's attached to those supports, that has an ice bin, appears to have a refrigerator in the middle, is used as a prep table to make cocktails, has either lock storage or refrigerator storage in the front, and there's power running to the entire structure. Previously in the photograph, you'll notice when the bar was originally constructed, the main bar in 2015, you can see an electrical cord running on the ground over to the back of the property. Those, the, in the main part of the bar, the commercial outdoor refrigerators, those kegerators, they require power to keep all the kegs cold. And they lock and everything is, the liquor and the beer are stored, I believe, stored there. And so the issue is whether or not the rear structure of the bar, which is, which is within the setback, okay? Whether that portion of the bar is deemed a structure and a building such that it should comply with the five-foot setback. In a sense, simply moving the entire structure five feet would eliminate the issue, assuming that it can be permitted by the building official. In my opinion, I think moving the entire structure five feet forward would eliminate the issue about the setback and the question of whether or not that TV stand is a fence or is actually a structure subject to the code.
So we have a disagreement on definition?
Essentially, yes.
Just to make it, those of us who are a little bit slower and most people trying to, trying to figure this one out, it's a disagreement over definition. And we don't have a definition in the bylaw, but, and also, we don't have a characterization in the bylaw either as to, well, if it looks like and seems like, then it should be like, okay.
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Hilliard. There is, there is examples given for structure.
Yep, I've read those.
Okay. So there are examples, but there aren't examples for fence, for example. There aren't examples for TVs, certainly for TV stand. Or what is referred to in 325-17, I believe, as other enclosure. But the textbook definition of enclosure typically refers to an artificial or a natural barrier that is typically used to corral cattle and animals.
So you're asking us to overrule the building inspector's allowance of this, what you refer to as a structure, and to treat it as, in fact, a structure? And therefore, require that it be permitted in the same way any other structure would be permitted, being five feet or more from the line?
Yes and no. I just, I take-
What's the no part?
Well, the no part is just the way in which you used allowance. I don't interpret Mr. Chesley's letter as allowing anything. There's, I don't think there's any dispute that the, neither the bar, main part, front part of the bar, nor the rear part of the bar are permitted. That the, Mr. Chesley's letter simply suggests that he's interpreting the bylaw that the 325, Section 17's definition of fence, he's treating essentially the rear part of the bar as a fence or other enclosure. And my dispute is that that's an improper interpretation of the bylaw.
Would you agree that if, in fact, at all times, this structure that you're referring to was five feet in, would you agree that it didn't need any further approval from the town?
No. I, my argument would be that, given the fact that it is a non-conforming lot, pre-existing non-conforming lot. There is an issue that is before the court that I don't think we should get into today as to whether or not the change of use from retail to resident, from retail to restaurant is permissible by the planning board. That's an issue that's for the Land Order.
Do you have an issue?
Sure. And, however, the structure does intensify the non-conforming nature of the lot, because the use, if we deem it an accessory structure, it has to be accessory to the principal use. The principal use of the structure was of a single-family residence when it was constructed. It has since changed. Whether or not that change was properly permitted is an issue for a later day. So in that respect, I disagree and simply suggest to you that my reading of the bylaw is that, that the owner of the trust should apply to the building official for a permit for the entire structure. If it is determined to be an accessory structure by the building official and is required, therefore, to meet the five-foot setback, then my clients would obviously have to have a conversation as to whether or not the grant of that permit by the building official was proper, or whether or not this board was required to issue a special permit because of the non-conforming nature, pre-existing non-conforming nature of the property.
Okay.
Okay?
Are you aware whether or not any such building permits were ever issued for so-called Perks, as it stands now, to construct any part of it?
Any part of the bar?
Yeah.
I'm not aware.
Okay. Any part of the building?
The, there was a, an appeal in 2008 to this board to change the retail use, at the time, there was just a retail store there.
Yeah.
To add a eight-seat café within the retail store.
Okay.
That is the only building permit of which I'm aware. There are building permits that have been issued within the past week for a build-out of a restroom and a handicap ramp. And as I understand, there's been an application to the building official for other aspects of the build-out of the interior retail space to change it to an interior bar and music stage, et cetera. But those have not been acted, as I understand, those have not been acted on. Mr. Chesley can speak better than that.
Just one more question, just to bring it back to where you began. So if this structure were moved five, five feet, whatever it is, into the property that is owned and rented by Perks', this whole thing would go away, in your opinion?
If, if it is determined that the structure complies with the bylaw and meets the setback and doesn't require a special permit, or even if a special permit is granted, then I, there's, there would be no issue, as far as I'm concerned. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No further questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Tomlinson, I was there six hours ago, and there were people sitting at a bar, but I have to confess that I'm confused by this diagram. Could you indicate to us on this diagram which way is the Nantucket Sound and which way is Route 28?
Yes. May I approach?
Yes.
Okay. So the drawing, I believe, Ms. Muller, that you're referring to is that which was attached to the trust's memorandum, Exhibit B. And essentially, if you notice the north arrow here.
I do.
It, I actually think that that's upside down, but-
That's why I'm confused.
Okay. So that's a, that's a very reasonable conclusion. If you are on Route 28, which is up here at the top of the page.
Okay, I am correct.
The very rear of the property is right here, and the, and the back part of the bar is essentially on the property line.
So when I came down off Route 28 today and walked alongside the building, this is where people were sitting and enjoying themselves. And this building is Port?
The building, if you're looking at this page.
This is the port.
This, this building here to the right of the page, excuse me, Port is over here to the, to the left of the page.
That's what I thought.
This is a residential. Can you next door, may I see these photographs? So if you are, in this photograph here, if you are, this, this view is from Route 28 looking into the rear of the property.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. And indeed, it is the arrow that had me confused and, because it was counterintuitive. Okay.
Rightly so.
So the question is about the setback from the back end of the property and whether or not this is a properly, properly described and properly permitted structure, fence, whatever you consider it.
It's not permitted, so there's no question of whether or not the permit is proper. The structure itself was constructed without a permit. There is no permit for any part of this bar structure, the front bar or the rear bar. The issue is whether or not a permit is required because it is a structure and not a fence, okay, per se. So if, if, if the building official's interpretation of the bylaw is correct, that portion, if that portion, the rear portion of the bar is not part and parcel with the front part of the bar, if it's not considered to be part and parcel and therefore a separate structure, if it's a fence structure or an other enclosure pursuant to 325-17, the building official's interpretation is that essentially no permit is required and it can be placed anywhere on the property. But I would submit to you that if you were to place shelving and storage on top of the main part of the front bar, and that it was just the front bar, it would still be required to be five feet from the rear property line. And the reality of this application is that if the, if the board, if the board agrees with the building official that that rear structure of the bar is a fence or other enclosure.
The so-called TV stand and-
Yes, the so-called TV stand. So if the TV stand and TV cover are deemed to be a fence or other enclosure, then every establishment in town can throw one up anywhere on the property and advertise their liquor and sell their liquor on it without, quite frankly, any oversight by the town. And my client's bar at the Port has shelving behind it. We submitted a, we, like Perks', constructed the bar without a permit, but it was properly permitted last year by the building official. And so that, there's really utterly no difference between the bars other than their layout. And they both have shelving, they both have kegerators to cool kegs of beer, they both have taps, they both have lines, supply lines, drains, power. The difference here is that the bar on my client's property is eight feet from the property line, and this is a few inches.
Okay. So you say that the owners of the Port have no objection to the owners of Perks' operating this business. There's no issue of competition.
There's no issue of competition. Competition is good.
You're simply concerned that the people at Perks' have not been held to the same standard that other businesses in town are?
Largely, yes.
Okay.
I mean, and there is an issue with respect to the conversion, the change of use, but again, those issues are not before this board today. And this was a simple issue of whether or not the interpretation of that structure by the building official as a fence or other enclosure is supported by the bylaws, essentially. Because the issues of the, the issues of the encroachment, if we accept the site plan as submitted by Perks', according to their site plan, there's no encroachment. It's .3 feet, it's four inches. So there's no encroachment by that. Previously, the roof overhung my client's fence and was supported by my client's fence. There was actually lateral supports to uphold the vertical frame structure for the roof was actually tied into my client's fence. But now that's been taken out.
So your client owns the fence behind-
Correct.
Perks?
Correct.
As well as behind the Port?
Alongside of the Port and behind Perks.
Okay.
So between, between the two properties, that fence, part of that fence, I should say, belongs to my client. There is a gate that jogs over that belongs to Perks.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further, Ms. Muller?
No, thank you.
Mr. Hutterstedt?
Let's go back to square one.
Okay.
This was a single-family, non-conforming residence. It was transferred and approved by a building permit at some point to what you see today?
There was a special permit issued by this board to create an eight-seat café within the retail space on the first floor.
Say that again, please.
There was a special permit issued by this board in 2008 to create an eight-seat café in the, within the retail space.
Okay, 2008. And is none of, none of what you see today was there as far as the bar and any of that?
Anything outdoor was added after 2008.
Okay. What about the bathrooms?
They have a, they are currently framing a public restroom. There's no public restroom at present in the, in Perks'. They are framing in a, I believe, one restroom.
Did they have a building permit for that?
They need a building permit for the restroom.
Do they have one?
It is, I believe there's been a permit issued for the, for the public restroom and for a handicap access ramp on the back.
And when did that happen?
Within the past month, within the past week.
Really?
Yes.
And how long have they been running it like that, without that?
Since 2000, essentially since 2009.
Can you serve?
That's, you know, I'm, I, that's the reason I asked the question, because I'm concerned about, you're taking a single-family residential structure and you're con, turning it, you're turning into at a, a public-for-pay restaurant, if you will, that, to me, any, any single-family, I got a single-family dwelling next door to me, they had to take down mirrors in their bathroom, and they needed- down mirrors in their bathroom, and they needed a permit. And now you're telling me that you have a residential structure that had no permit or building, building, special building approval to put in bathrooms until after they had already had, they already needed them, and they had a business that required them?
To be clear, it's my understanding that a public restroom is not required for a take, a, a restaurant that has takeout or takeaway food.
But they don't, don't have takeout, they sit there.
They have what's called takeaway. So the Board of Health has licensed the premises for takeaway food service and outdoor convenience seating. Most recently, there has been an approval by the Board of Health to move some of that seating inside and onto the porch. But they do not, the Board of Health does not regulate restrooms. The Board of Health does not require restrooms.
But the building permit does. The building permits require it, do they not?
If the building official, and my understanding is, under the, under the building code, if the building official determines that the restaurant use is an assembly use, then a public restroom is required, at least one. But...
Did that ever happen?
My understanding, there was an issue in 2008, which is referenced in my correspondence, that both the building official and the town planner had reservations over the ZBA, the, this board issuing the special permit to bring the eight café seats in because of the lack of a public restroom. And that was, they, both the building official and the town planner at that time expressed their reservation to this board about granting the special permit for the eight-seat café within the retail space.
And was it granted?
This board granted the permit, the special permit. And then there was a build-out of the, the retail space to, into a café. That did occur in 2009.
So, okay, so we've already granted that, so I stand corrected. I guess I was a little bit ahead of myself, but at that same time in 2008, when we granted, I guess it's 2008, when we granted the special permit, did include the bar?
No, there was no bar in 2008. There was no bar until the outside bar was constructed in 2015.
There was nothing, so, and it was considered to be a takeout? The 2008 special permit was takeout only?
They were serving, it was supposed to be takeaway sandwiches and coffee. So in 2008, it was a café that served muffins, pre-made muffins, sandwiches.
Okay.
And, and pre-made coffee.
Okay, so let's be, let's be clear. That's not what's going on now.
No, it is not.
So what's going on now is a restaurant?
Yes.
With seating, with bar.
Yes.
And takeout.
Yes.
To some degree. I don't, I'm not going to say alcohol, but let's be fair, it's, it's a restaurant.
The alcohol must be consumed on the premises.
The restaurant must, yeah, okay, so where's the, where is, where is the special permit for that?
So, and again, this is an issue that we probably shouldn't get into today. I'll just speak to...
That was granted by the planning board. That's the subject of the litigation.
That's the subject of the litigation on appeal.
Say that again.
The planning board granted them a special permit, and that's what the lawsuit is about right now.
So the planning...
Dean, we've got to stick to what's before us.
I understand. Okay, so I'm going to go, I'm just trying to get...
Is that TV stand?
I'm just trying to get to, to where we are today, so everybody understands. So what your issue is, all the litigation is going on, and you understand all of that. What your issue is, there is a subset to that, and that subset is that the bar structure, if you will, you consider it a structure because it's, it's got two-by-four or two-by-six posts, and I don't know whether they're in cement or not, but I would assume they could be. Making an assumption, may not be true, but you consider that to be a structure for which the planning department, the planning board may or may not have been advised of it, but surely the building inspector should have been notified and a special permit granted, which there was not, because you consider it a structure where he does not. Is that, is that basically what's going on?
In part, that is true. The planning board received the same site plan that you have before you.
Right.
That, that identified the bar and TV stand and cover, but it was not part of the discussion before the planning board. And when it was circulated, when, when the site plan special permit application was circulated to the building official, he did not have any objection to it, but at that time, there was no complaint to enforce the outdoor bar. So the complaint to enforce the outdoor bar arose after the site plan special permit, because it was at that time that we learned that the bar encroached. Okay, so the, the rear portion of the bar, after the site plan was filed, after Perks filed their site plan with the town, we discovered that the bar was actually installed on my client's property. And so...
It's been moved back.
It has been moved to now, not, no longer encroaching the, the rear property line, the rear yard.
Right.
But is within the five-foot setback. And again, this returns to the issue that Mr. Hilliard raised.
But you still consider it a structure, and therefore it should have been a special permit.
Correct.
And it was not.
Correct.
Thank you.
That's it?
Yeah, that's it.
Ms. Muller, did you have something else?
No, Dean covered it. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to come back to a point that Mr. Hilliard raised on 325-17, and as you've identified, Attorney Tomlinson, kind of the, the bottom line here, what is an other enclosure? I mean, it's in the bylaw.
Yes.
It must have some meaning. And we have, as you pointed out, the definition of structure in 325-2 with some examples. Structure would be combination of materials assembled at a fixed location to give support or shelter, and then they give some examples such as a building, a bridge, trussel tower, retaining wall, tank, tunnel, tent, and so forth. They don't define or other enclosure. And it must have some meaning, and I guess my question is, why do you feel the building inspector does not have the authority to use his judgment in deciding what an other enclosure is?
I'm not disputing the, the authority of the building official to, to accept something, okay? My issue is that the term enclosure is not defined in the bylaw because its plain meaning doesn't require a definition in the bylaw. The definition, the bylaws are very clear about those items that are similar to a structure. They are a combination of materials. This is a combination of materials. A fence, a wall, or other enclosure would be a singular material. It's a hedge. It is a hedge row. It is a retaining wall, brick, block, otherwise. It's an enclosure which typically, if you look at the textbook definition of enclosure, to surround or encompass, to fence or hem in on all sides. This has a roof that is supported by a frame. It is supported by a framework that provides shelter and protects people and the goods that the, that the establishment sells. None of that is referenced in a fence or wall or other enclosure. And if you look at Black's Law Dictionary or, you know, Oxford's Dictionary, examples of an, of an enclosure are a paddock, a fold, a pen, a compound, a stockade, a ring, a yard, a pound, a coop, a cage, corral. And I would suggest to you that the plain meaning of enclosure, to, to view this structure as an enclosure, to me, is a tortured reading of the plain meaning of an enclosure.
Well, but you have to read it context, because I think 325-17, it says a fence, hedge, wall, or other enclosure, which to me means something sort of like a fence, hedge, wall.
Yes, I, I don't disagree with that. What I'm saying is to classify this building structure as an other enclosure so that it can be sighted anywhere on a premises for its intended use.
Well, it's kind of like a wall.
Is...
Can I add on to your question? So what would you classify this as, Dan?
Right. I would classify this as a, as a building structure.
And how do you define a building structure?
A building structure is defined in the bylaws under 325 Section 2. Building, portable or fixed, roof or similar covering, forming structure for shelter of persons or property, et cetera.
And now apply that definition to this structure.
It's fixed.
Is it completely fixed or partly fixed?
Well, I think it's...
How was it constructed? Do you know?
It's constructed out of four-by-four pressure-treated timber.
But is it fixed? I mean, is there, is there cement in the ground? How is it fixed?
It's fixed to the ground with stakes on either side of the upright support.
Is that fixed? I don't know if that's fixed. But in the, in the, in, in terms of real property, is that how we would use the term fixed?
No, because building, you don't need to in terms of real property.
So it's not fixed?
But in terms of real property, a structure can be portable or fixed, okay? Under the bylaw, a building structure is portable or fixed. It, it can have a roof or similar covering.
So you want to use the statute both ways? It's both portable and fixed. However, it is most convenient to your case?
Respectfully, no. The, the term, the term is defined under the bylaw for building as portable or fixed, and that is intended because the bylaw is written to be able to afford this board to be able to look at what is the intended use of the structure. And a fence, a wall, or other enclosure, the intended use of that is to corral or complete on all sides, but not to afford cover.
I believe the purpose of the statute is to allow Mr. Chesley to do his job, and then it comes to this board to interpret whether or not he did his job.
Agreed. At the time that this appeal was filed, Mr. Chesley had not taken any enforcement action. There was no permit applied for it. So the issue before this board is, if it defines, if it agrees with the building official's interpretation of other enclosure to include this structure, then the outcome of that, all right, the result of that, is that this structure and its use can be placed anywhere, any in town, without any review by any board, solely by the building official. That's the, and that was not the intent of the bylaws, as I, I submit.
Okay, I have one more question. I took this out of your letter.
Yes, Ms. Muller.
Apparently, the Board of Selectmen on April 29, 2019, did approve the liquor license and the outside bar.
They approved the change of the alteration of premises, the definite, the defined premises to include an outdoor bar.
Include the outdoor bar.
But the select board was not aware that it was not permitted.
Well, okay, I guess, I guess my question is, why is your appeal not moved under Gallivan versus Department of Appeals of Wesleyan, since you didn't, you know, file a, an appeal from that decision of the board to recognize the, basically the structure as it is now and the outside bar?
Because it was not pursued into a site plan, and it was not a permit. The select board did not grant a permit. They simply allowed the, the established premises to alter its definition so that it could submit it to the ABCC. The select board is not a permit-granting authority. The only permit-granting authority I'm aware of is the ZBA or the planning board.
Right, and the planning board did, I know it's in litigation, but they did give a permit.
Not for the, not for the outdoor bar.
What was the permit they gave? I thought it was the permitted use.
The, the use was...
Including the bar.
The use was, was to build an indoor bar and move some seating that is currently outside to the porch and inside.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Donahue.
All I'm going to do on this is the chapter and section that's cited by the, by Mr. Chesley, is that 325-17. He, as has been restated by at least three people here, is the local interpreter of that portion of that, of that bylaw. And I am going to go along with his interpretation.
Mr. Rameshwar.
You mentioned that the bar and the television support are not connected, or they are connected?
They are connected via a drop-down table that is hinged as part of the main bar.
Okay, so that, excuse me, so then that table drops down like this? It's not nailed to it?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay.
I don't know, I can't speak with personal knowledge.
All right, so it's, it's something they lift up to go in?
I, I assume so. I don't know, I don't know the answer to that.
And the, the, the roof section?
Yes.
That comes off of what part, again?
It comes off of what is referred to on the site plan as the TV stand.
As a TV stand?
So there's...
Is it connected to the bar as well?
It, no, it appears to overhang the bar.
About how much?
I, I don't know the answer to that. Maybe three or four feet, perhaps the, the...
So it doesn't cover the whole bar?
No, it covers where the employees stand, I believe.
Within three feet of the, the television support?
It appears to overhang both sides of the structural support. It obviously appears to hang over the bar side. The substantial majority hangs over the bar side, where the TV is covered and sheltered, where the liquor is sheltered, where their prep station is sheltered, where the employees work.
Okay, and, and so let's say that the bar itself was gone.
The main bar, the front bar?
Yeah.
Yes.
What would you call the, that remaining structure?
I would call it...
If it's a structure?
I would call it the outdoor bar.
You would call it a bar?
Well, the front bar serves alcohol.
Right.
And the TV stand also stores and serves alcohol. The only difference is that one has a TV and a roof, and the other does not. Okay.
All right, that's all. Thank you.
Anything further?
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll hold my, my summary comments to the end, but my, my one question for you is, you know, why did your clients file this complaint?
My clients filed this complaint initially because the bar, the rear part of the bar structure was physically installed on my client's property. It was a legal encroachment.
And so that has been remedied?
That has been remedied, but the subsequent, I shouldn't say subsequent, the other issue is that none of this is permitted. So my client was forced to go through extensive site plan review and approval of its own bar that, that Perks, as a neighboring establishment, has undergone no such scrutiny. And this original bar was constructed with, you know, a power cord feeding it, laying loose on the ground. And my client is a director of butter, and there's a safety issue with that.
So you're stating that the entire reason you're before this board today is because of safety concerns?
No, the entire reason I'm before this board today is because we requested Mr. Chesley to enforce the zoning bylaw, as is his mandate, to enforce that this structure is not permitted.
So, which he did, and so why are you before this board? What, why are you driving this complaint forward?
There's still no permit. He, Mr. Chesley will acknowledge that this structure contains electrical, contains plumbing, contains supply lines and drains.
I'm just wondering, like, what is the specific harm to your client which caused them to hire you and come before this board and, and file litigation? Why are you here tonight?
Because they have an interest in this town. They have an interest in their business. They have an interest to protect that business, and the bylaws are for the police power to protect the safety of everyone.
Okay.
Okay? There, there are hundreds of people...
This is motivated by their business.
No, it is not motivated by their business.
But that's what you just said.
No, I said they have, they have an interest in their business.
Okay, that's good enough, though.
Okay.
Anything further, Mr. Tomlinson, before I open it up to the public?
I may have some follow-up comments to counsel for the trust.
I have a question. Mr. Hedersted. It is, you consider it a structure physically. I understand that. But go tell me, it's not only a structure that houses material such as liquor, it also houses capability to serve out of pressure-treated canisters underneath the store, stored, like beer kegs, I assume? It has, uh, does it have a means of disposing of unwanted alcohol or materials associated with serving a bar, like paper goods, et cetera? Does it have that? Does it have electrical lines?
Yes.
For doing TV, obviously?
Yes.
For lighting, for all kinds of things. It has, am I missing anything? It doesn't have a septic system by itself.
I don't believe it has a...
Doesn't have, but it does...
I don't believe it has a connection to the, to the onsite sewage treatment.
It's not connected to the sewage, as far as you know.
I do not know how excess beer or foam or liquor that is spilled, I don't know, I don't... do not know how that is captured, collected, or disposed of. There are catch trays below the taps that presumably are.
There's a sink, there's a sink there, is there not a sink?
There's no sink here.
Is there, is there a, things to wash glasses?
There is no dishwasher in this structure.
No dishwasher?
There is a hand sink mounted on the outside of the building, away from this bar structure.
So where are the glasses, oh.
They serve plastic cups.
It's all plastic?
Yes.
So that's trash?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So other than that, it looks like a, a fixed, if you will, it's, it's grounded in the, it's, I assume it's grounded for power?
I as, the, the outdoor refrigeration units, the kegerators, require power.
They require power, they got to be grounded.
Well, I don't know if it's grounded at the bar, if it's grounded back in the structure, I can't answer that. And again, these are issues that would, if the building official were to treat this as a structure, those issues would be reviewed. For example, the safety issue of whether or not this is portable or fixed, and how it's anchored or supported to the ground?
Yeah.
Or whether it could fall over on employees or patrons, or fall backwards and destroy my client's fence? Those are issues that would be reviewed by the building official if it is treated as a structure.
My, I'm trying to bring it up because I'm concerned about the fact that classify, not classifying it as a structure negates the issues that we just went through, power, grounding, et cetera. It negates that.
Yes.
And I'm concerned about that, whether or not we let that happen, and it goes throughout the town, we don't make, it's not our purpose here to make decisions that become locked in concrete or, or established as precedent. But my concern in this case is, we may have overlooked something, and it's, and, God help us, we all make mistakes, but in the long run, I want to make sure that you understand that if, in fact, your request is upheld, that we are not opening up Pandora's Box on the litigation itself, we are strictly talking about this particular bar being concerned as a structure, and it should have had a, and it should have had a special permit for that and that only, and it should have come through the building inspector to us and nobody else. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
For the purposes of today's discussion, yes, certainly if the board.
Thank you.
Certainly if the board, if I, if I may, if the, if the board agrees with the building official's interpretation of this structure as being an other enclosure, and affirms that, my client may or may not pursue a review of that determination. But I would suggest to you that treating this as a structure and allowing the, the procedure in place in the bylaw to follow avoids the very concerns that you raise about some of the safety, electrical, plumbing issues related to this structure. And if that determination is that this structure is fully compliant after code, and this board issues a special permit, then I wouldn't think my client would have any issue with that.
We've resolved one issue already, which they have agreed that they were, they, they, the owners of the property agreed that they encroached on somebody's property and they moved it.
Correct.
I understand that, and that's good.
Yes.
It took a while, but they finally did.
Our team would open up the public, a lot of this discussion is for the board.
I know, yes, I'm sorry.
But I want to make sure you understand that, as far as I'm concerned, I am concerned about the fact that we may have overlooked something that we should have seen coming, and we should not, never have overlooked it, and we can't overlook it in the future. That's my concern.
I'm going to open it up to the public.
Mr. Chairman, may I have one question before we do that?
Okay.
Mr. Tomlinson?
Yes, sir.
Is the, I don't, for lack of a better term, ice chest where the beer is stored, is that a permanent attached part of this TV stand, whatever we're calling?
It appears to be a plastic igloo cooler that drops into a bin.
Okay, so if, if, if it's, so if you took that out, what you have is a structure, I'm, I'm using that term generically, not as a legal definition. If you took that out, and as you say, it goes in and out, it's a place where it could fit, does it have, when it goes in, if you know?
I don't.
Does it have any connection to any electricity once it's put in?
I don't, I would assume, looking at the photograph, I have no firsthand or personal knowledge. I would assume, looking at the photograph, which everyone here looks at, it appears to be a regular plastic boat cooler that has a pot drain.
Okay, an igloo cooler that comes out, and if it's not in, what we have is a box frame with a TV set up top and the box down below?
I don't know if there's, if that's a stainless lined bin that has a drain connected to it. In the photographs that I've presented to you, it appears that between the stainless steel, what I refer, maybe as a condiment container, and between the igloo cooler in the middle down below, appears to be another refrigeration unit. I don't know if it's a refrigeration unit, I don't know if it's just lock storage. I can't, I can't speak to that.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public, and when I recognize you, I'd like you to come to the podium and address, introduce yourself, and speak loudly for those of us that are hearing challenged.
I'm happy to exit the table if people want to sit closer, if that's convenient for the board. And I can take a seat in the chair and wait.
Okay, it doesn't, it doesn't really matter, but if you'd like to.
If it's convenient for everyone else?
If you still haven't go to the podium, that's normally what we do, so you can stay there.
Thank you.
Otherwise, I got to come back and set up. Yes, ma'am?
My name's Sarah Toronto Flores, and I am the attorney for Carol and Al Novak, who are here today, who own the property, as well as for Taylor Powell and his wife, who operate Perks. If it is okay, could I come up and sit down? I would like to spread out my things that I have, many of them.
Okay, if you got.
If, if that's okay, I appreciate Attorney Tomlinson making the offer, and if it's okay with you.
Yeah, that'd be fine, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay.
The other thing, I just wanted to ask at the outset if I could see the pictures, because I haven't seen the pictures that the board saw before I address you, if that's okay.
And there's this one, which I think is older.
Thank you so much.
Any others there? Sure, that's fine.
Would it be okay if I showed my picture?
Please.
So there was a lot of information that is, was stated to be unknown, and I think it's important for the board to know that, obviously, my clients have been here since 2005, so they know the answers to these questions, and are thankful for the opportunity to answer your questions. Also importantly, the building commissioner knew the answer to many of these questions because he's been out to the site, not more than once, to inspect this structure in particular in light of the number of complaints that have been brought. I, I think that, and appreciate Attorney Tomlinson getting right to the heart of the issue, which is the setback to the bar. Reading the narrative, I thought it was more expansive than that. Certainly, the relief requested pertained to the bar, so that's what I focused my memorandum on. But with regard to the history of the property, and I know that you had particular questions, in 2008, this board issued a special permit for retail use in the front and an eight-seat restaurant in the back. In 2012, this board issued another special permit, where the restaurant use was expanded to 33 seats. The 2019 special permit that was just issued by the planning board went from 33 to 39. That was all that it was, that is on appeal, but the 2008 and 2012 special permits were not appealed, and up to there, they, they authorized a 33-seat restaurant at this location. In 2016, this bar was installed, at the time a plan was filed with Town Hall. Board of Health reviewed it, the building commissioner reviewed it. In 2017, I believe, and I, the date Mr. Tomlinson references correct, the Board of Selectmen reviewed it and allowed alcohol to be served at it. In that year, the Perks, the Port, and the Ember all put outdoor bars, and it was a big issue in the town because there were three new outdoor bars. It was fully reviewed at that time. All of these questions related to, you know, whether the use is allowed and it's a single family dwelling, that's, that's been reviewed in 2008 and 2012. Again, the nine additional seats in 2019, that, that's not what this issue is. This issue tonight concerns the bar and whether it needs to comport with setbacks. All of the questions, I think, related to refrigeration and electrical pertain to the bar, front portion of the bar, I'll call it, that is five and a half feet away. That rear TV stand, in my memo, I indicated, I called it temporary, i.e. no footings. There are no footings, there's no concrete holding it, there are those two posts. So it consists of the two posts and the panel in between with a TV on it, and this roof projection that is pictured in the photograph that I appended at the back of your memo, and the roof ends right here. Just an overhang, I called it an overhang for a reason, because it's not covering anything. The wooden enclosures in the front are empty in the season, and each night, everything that's inside of them comes out. They're coolers for, for things that need cooling, they're boxes for alcohol that's used during the night, there's no sink, there's no electricity established with it, they're just enclosures sitting in front of this panel that's supported with the two posts, with the television and the overhang. So we've eliminated, apparently, a complaint that the outdoor bar violates a setback. We're talking about this enclosed, this, this rear, what we call the TV stand in our memo, that's what we're talking about. Now, we've narrowed it down to that. I want to address a comment you made that, you said it took us a while to move that off their property line. Everyone thought that its location was on the property line because the fence goes along the property line, and this was on the Perks side of the fence. The fence has been there since 1940. So when you said that we conceded it was encroaching and we moved it, we, we didn't concede because we think we've gained title to that little strip of land, but we moved it to be a good neighbor, and we have said that in the Superior Court litigation that they also filed us, affidavits filed to say, we are not conceding any encroachment, but we moved it because we're trying to get along. This is a very, very tight neighborhood, we understand. It's tight, they're very close, if they have concerns, let's move it. So we did. And we did it within a week of getting served with a complaint that, that identified the encroachment. So it didn't take us long, we did it immediately. So now it is six to eight inches, I think, off of this property line. But again, so we did it in a week, no, no concrete, it was easily pulled up and pushed forward and put in. I hope you all got a letter from your building commissioner, which I hadn't seen, actually, when I wrote your memo, but it echoed what I said, and if you don't have it, if I can produce.
We have it.
You've seen it, okay.
We have it.
And he did, with regard to the TV stand, reference the same, sorry, provision that I did, which is 35017 of your bylaw. And I think that that section, and you've, you've done a great job in parsing it, speaks to not just fences, but walls and enclosures. And I think the building commissioner has a very, very difficult job when he's got to interpret things, not every single word in the dictionary could possibly be defined in your zoning bylaw. So his job was to determine whether this TV stand, as I've called it, but as we all know it is in the photographs, two posts with a panel and a TV and a roof overhang with some enclosures in the front, whether that should be considered within 32517. And that provision speaks to not only fences, but to hedge walls or other enclosures. And I submit to you that he was correct in his conclusion that this TV stand fits within that definition. I, I, tonight, it occurred to me, it's the rear wall of the bar. If this was inside, that would be the rear wall of the bar. Because it's outside, they built a wall, and they put this enclosure in the front of it, where they put liquor in while they're open, they take it in and lock it up inside at night. Fully permitted by the planning board, fully permitted, the restaurant use was permitted by this board before then. The idea that there was no permits to is sim, just simply not true in 2016, as I indicated. Plans were submitted, discussions with the building commissioner, the board of health came out and inspected. This, this bar is fully permitted. So I can't stress that we object to that, that conclusion. We certainly have done, we felt we did more than the port. I just heard tonight, for the first time, that the port went through site plan review for their outdoor bar. I didn't, I didn't know about that, I knew that they had constructed an outdoor bar, and I brought pictures of it, because it, it looks like this. It too has an overhang, it too, it has a very nice wood deck that goes all the way up to the property line. Our own measurements are that it encroaches into the five-foot setback, it's not setback more than five feet. Certainly more of a structure than ours is. Why is that important? In, in the law, we have something called unclean hands, and when you're going in front of a board or, or a judge, and you're asking for equitable relief, like the removal of something, you should have clean hands when you do it and not have the same problem yourself. We haven't raised this as an enforcement issue, that's not my intention to bring it, but it's to show you that their bar was permitted, our bar was permitted. Ours is much less like a structure than theirs is. I think that ours meets that definition of fence, wall, or other enclosure to a T, and I think that your building commissioner was not wrong in concluding that therefore it doesn't have to comply with that five-foot setback. And I urge you to please uphold him. As someone indicated tonight, he is the zoning enforcement officer, he's the guy charged with an interpretation of your zoning bylaw. And I think unless you find that wholly unreasonable and out of the realm of a reasonable interpretation, you overturn it. But if not, then your job is to uphold it, and I think that in light of the true facts, he was very reasonable, and in fact, I think it's in exactly correct interpretation, and I ask you to uphold it. And I'm happy to, I know you had a lot of questions before, if I didn't touch on them regarding the permitting history of the site, or exactly what's there, I will do my best to answer them, and I know the building commissioner is here, he can answer questions, but also my clients can be more specific with regard to the details of this TV stand, as we're calling it, to the extent you can't tell from the photograph what those details are. Thank you.
A question, if we were to hold that the TV stand and TV cover was a structure, what would be the hardship on your clients of moving it forward towards 28, five feet?
Right, so if you look at two things, and I apologize for confusing you with that, that arrow, that's part of Down Cape's logo, so it points down south, yeah.
And we're used to seeing it pointing north, yeah.
So what, what you can see from the Exhibit A, which may not be clear on the detail plan, which is Exhibit B, that if this is shifted forward, you're squeezing the traffic between the corner of the bar and the corner of the building. And we do know that free flow of, of areas where people are assembling at the bar needs to be free passage, and I think that if, if we were to move the whole thing five feet forward, then you're going to close, you're going to pinch that area to the point where it's, it's tight and may cause a problem.
Okay, but it's not going to be the end of the world. I mean, they'll still be able to continue in business, and the people are still going to come.
There's nowhere, it's no longer a bar, that's the problem.
No, it would be a bar, everything would go forward five feet. I just want to know what the impact is, I'm not saying I'm.
I wish we could go over, like.
Agreeing that it's a structure, I just want to know what the impact would be.
I think if you could go closer to the sideline and then forward, you wouldn't have the problem I'm talking about so much, but where we have to stay five feet off that sideline, if you move that five feet forward, the two, the corner of the bar and the corner of the building pinch together. So there's no egress and access around the corner of that bar, does that?
Yeah, no, I understand, thank you. Mr. Hilliard?
So to narrow it down to the, I'm trying to get to this before, the one issue?
Yeah.
And that one issue is if this is considered. And that one issue is if this is considered to be an independent bunch of wood nailed together, I don't want to use the other word. It not, in your opinion, it does not require a five-foot setback because it is not considered a structure, but rather it is considered to be something as a fence would be defined?
Right.
That fair enough? Okay.
If it's an accessory structure, it has to be five feet. If it's a fence, wall, or other enclosure, it doesn't, right?
The building inspector has determined that that's what it is, and therefore it doesn't require the five-foot setback.
Correct.
Okay. The neighbor who is here tonight petitioning us is taking the position that, in fact, it is a structure, and that, in fact, it should be five feet off the premises. So I'm repeating what the chairman just asked you, which is if we assume that if we uphold the building official, then notwithstanding an appeal, that's it. Things stay as they are. If we don't uphold, and if we overturn the building official, then you either move that structure, five feet or probably less than that, whatever it is, or you take an appeal. So you're asking us to decide simply, do we uphold or do we not uphold? The building inspector's decision, if you will, or lack of decision, as you're arguing, that the definition of structure does not fit this bunch of wood that's all together and houses a television? Is that what it, it houses a television?
I don't think that's unfair. I would have put it positively, that this assembly of materials is a wall.
I don't want to use the word "structure."
Right, right. So I'm not.
And I don't mean it, I'm not downgrading it, but from, I think what you're suggesting is that, look it, this is not part of the bar.
Yeah.
It isn't a bar, it isn't a structure. It's some two-by-fours that uphold a television set, and it has a bin in below where you can just drop in a cooler and pull it out.
Yes.
That's what you're suggesting.
It is, yes.
Okay. That's all I need to hear. Thank you.
Ms. Mueller.
One more thing. We've been discussing the history. From my point of view, the history has nothing to stew here. It's irrelevant to us tonight.
That's right.
The only issue here is do we not agree with the definition?
That's right.
Ms. Mueller.
I was with you on the concept of this being the rear wall of the bar. And I was thinking, okay, so if this were in the yard and there were a wedding there, I might erect a wall, and I might put dartboards on it, or I might put pictures of the happy couple on it, or I might put my artwork on it. But it's not just a wall, it's got a counter coming out from it.
That's the arm that's attached to the front of the bar, and it comes down.
Yeah.
That's part of the main bar.
This appears to be a counter, and the side goes down to the ground.
If I could, this part here is the arm that comes up.
Yes, that goes up.
Yeah.
But this.
This in the back, this is just wooden, that's the wooden enclosures that house, that's an Igloo cooler.
And this goes down to the ground. So it is in effect like a kitchen counter.
Okay.
Attached to a wall.
I called it, right? I called it, I was using the word enclosure because it encloses the beer and wine. You could put a counter there, I suppose, and have the same, just put something on top.
Open space in the middle where probably activities occur. I think I see paper napkins.
Like a cabinet, or like a garbage, you know those garbage bins that everybody puts on the edge of their property? So they're wooden, and they have the angled front, and they're wooden enclosures where they put garbage. Those don't have to comply with the setback. Those are enclosures within the meaning of that 17. This is enclosing alcohol instead of garbage.
This counter, whatever you call it, with these enclosures, with a side, and it extends, and it has the Igloo cooler dropped into it, and I see two bins here. This is attached to the wall, is that correct?
Attached, or is it just sitting in front?
I always question. It's attached.
It's attached.
I want to answer, but I always question.
Is this counter, whatever you may call it, attached to what?
The wall.
This lady is depicting as the rear wall.
Yes. Is that?
No. The answer is yes.
It is attached.
It's attached.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Hutterstein.
The TV stand and TV cover. Let's forget the cover for a minute, let's talk about the TV stand. Because the cover goes forward over, the cover apparently goes from rear to front, which the cover covers the walking space for the people who are behind the bar. Is that correct?
I don't think it does. I think it covers what you just described as the counter. It doesn't go all the way out, it stops here.
But it doesn't go all the way to the front of the bar, but it covers a lot of the workers. And the TV stand.
It covers, I think it covers this.
The TV.
It covers the TV, yeah.
Okay.
And the counter below it.
As depicted here, it goes.
Yeah, yeah.
Is the TV stand also the place where the liquor is held? Is that stand also the bar, the liquor shelves?
There are no liquor shelves. I, this is.
Where is the liquor stored on the bar? Is it on the TV stand?
When the bar is open, there is liquor stored in this cabinet. When the bar is closed, the liquor goes inside the building.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just for one second. We're asking questions that I think only the owner proprietor can answer. And I think in fairness to.
Well, I look at the TV.
Wait, 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 Dean, wait.
I'm just, we're asking questions, thank you.
I'm trying to understand, I just, I want to know one question.
Dean, one minute, Dean, one minute. Could you please identify yourselves, sir?
Yes, I'm Taylor Powell, owner-operator Perks.
Okay, go ahead, Dean.
I want to know where the liquor shelves, that you see the bottles in one picture that we had, you see the bottles lined up, where is that on this exhibit that we have? Where is that shown? Where is it? Is it embedded in the TV stand and TV cover?
Okay.
Or is it in the cover overhead? Or is it in the bar itself in the front where people, where people put their drinks?
Can I just answer one thing? This cover overhead is an awning. That's not this roofed, see the yellow? There's an awning. So this dotted line is not the roof. That's the awning.
What I'm driving at, and this is what the, is the TV stand and the liquor storage
shown for people to look at, are they integral, are they integrated into one wall? Is that one wall?
I don't understand your question, I'm sorry. There's liquor that's stored where it says TV stand and TV cover on this. There's liquor stored in there, wawa bars open.
Is the liquor stored in there?
Yeah, wawa bars.
Only when we're in operation.
Only when it's open.
So it's integral?
No.
The TV stand and TV cover is not just that. It happens to be the location of liquor, it's display as well as storage.
No, it's displayed while they're open.
Mike, let them answer.
Is it, is it display as well as storage in the same area that's loaded on, noted here as TV stand and cover? Is it the same location as you look down at this? Is it the same area? And I think the answer you already said to me is yes, it is.
So this, this area here, that's this rectangle that says TV stand and TV cover, when the bar is open, there's liquor stored in it, yeah.
That's what, that's what I, it's integrated, it's integral to the bar. So it's not just a TV stand that you're trying to tell me is a, is a wall? From somebody's judgment that it is a wall, and it's not, it's no longer requires a permit? What I'm telling you is, is that particular place in this bar is integral, the TV stand and TV cover is integral to the bar itself. You don't separate it, it's part of the bar.
It encloses the liquor when the bar is open.
It's part of the bar, exactly. So it's one, it's a unit. Don't try to, what I'm trying to do is, you're picking apart, this piece is not, is, you're not, okay. What I'm trying to say is the bar consists of the piece that's five foot, five foot five, and it goes all the way back to the TV stand. All of that, that whole section is considered to be what we, what somebody has said needs to be permitted, and you're saying it doesn't because the TV stand is not part of the bar and it doesn't need to be within the five feet five.
So it is permitted. We're saying it doesn't have to comply with the setbacks. It's fully permitted. He's arguing that it shouldn't have been permitted because it has to comply with a five-foot setback. He's alleging a zoning violation. It's permitted. The question is just whether it has to comply with a five-foot setback. And my position is that that section cited by the building commissioner just doesn't say wall, it also says other enclosures. And yes, that cabinet on the bottom encloses liquor, but I think that's still within the meaning of Section 17 of the zoning bylaw.
Okay.
Sir.
But the bar doesn't have to be.
Hold on, please.
What you're saying is the bar meets the 5.5, or the five-foot setback, but the part of the bar which includes the TV stand, the liquor, et cetera, doesn't have to.
Right.
And I'm trying to answer, why do you say that? You're segregating the portion of the bar which is very important to the bar. It's integral to the bar. So why are you separating it? Why not move the whole thing back because it's all one?
Two questions there, hold on for a second. Because there's two structures in there, they're agreeing that the front part is compliant. So we're only looking at the rear part. So I'm not.
I don't believe anybody has said the front part is compliant, but the back part isn't. What somebody's saying is the whole thing isn't, is out of compliance.
The front part is compliant, that's already been established. It's five feet, six is five feet five.
I'm trying to, I understand what you're saying. But what you've segregated, you've segregated the fact that the bar, the place where people stand, is different than the portion of the bar that includes the liquor.
It's different in the sense that that front part complies with the setback.
Okay, so why isn't the back part compliant with the setback?
That's the whole question.
That's what I want to get at.
That's what we're trying to decide.
If it's integral to it, why isn't it part of it? If it's integral to the bar, why is it not part of it?
They're not connected, and a bar is where you're something served. This isn't where something's served and someone's sitting down with their elbows. This is a TV cover that was protecting TV from getting wet. It's not storage because we're not storing it there, it's just for display purposes only. I don't want to get confused in some of this language of what's going on. It's on the back, customers can't touch it. It's just simply that houses TV, the way it's structured, we built it just like a fence. That's what we're calling it because in the law, that's what it is.
And what is the same?
Unless you could call it, what's to prevent me from getting a cabinet and putting a whole cabinet there? It's a cabinet.
But I'm trying to understand something. It's a cabinet, I don't care what you call it. You call it a stand, TV stand, you call it whatever. It is a storage and display area for liquor, is it not?
It's not storage because only when we're in service, those bottles are out there. When we open up, we bring them out. When we're about to close down, we bring them in.
It's display, it's display.
Yes, sir.
It's part of the bar. Is it not part of the bar? As a display, it's part of the bar. I'm trying to understand, please help me. I'm trying to understand why somebody has taken a bar, which normally includes, you know, a place to put your hands on, to have a drink in front of you, to look at either TV, or look at the liquor that's there, and select something, or have some water made, or have a plastic cup or something. It's a bar. And what somebody has done is decided.
Dean, not somebody, our building commissioner has made that determination.
Our building commissioner has decided, which somebody has taken objection to, has decided that one portion of the bar meets the setback requirements, but the integral, but an integral part of the bar does not. And what I'm trying to understand is, why isn't it, and why can't it be moved forward? Is somebody saying to me that a liquor display, or whatever else is, or a TV, but here is a liquor display that's, by the way, that's integral? You look at the picture, it's got it sitting there. Come on, people, the bar is sitting there. It shows people. It's got, it's got more than just liquor, it's got other things sitting there.
So I.
It's part of the bar. Wait a minute. Why is it segregated?
This is a discussion for us to have with the board. It's not up to them to make that determination.
All right, then that's my issue.
The building commissioner has made a determination, and we have to decide, is it correct or not? You will have plenty of time to discuss it with the board. I'm moving on, Dean. Mr. Donahue.
The structure at the back, the four-by-four, I'm going to rephrase that. The wood assembly behind the back there, which is a four-by-four and held together, but they're two-by-four, and the post appears to have another short four-by-four supporting it that's not in the ground. That's merely supporting that end of that wood. And that's what Mr. Chesney said, does not have to conform to the five-foot setback.
Right. That's right.
No further questions.
That's right.
Jimmy?
You've answered my questions, thank you. No further questions.
I have one more question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, but let's be brief because we want to.
It is brief.
Give the public a chance.
If I come here and sit on one of these stools, and you have the taps there for the beer, and I say, no, I don't want beer, would you make me a martini? What happens? Does somebody go back here, get gin off a shelf, because this is while you're in service, and on this counter, make a martini, and then turn and bring it to me?
So I'll let him answer, he can answer that, I don't know, but.
Or does the person get the equipment he or she needs to mix the martini and go to this bar where people are setting, and there are taps, and mix it there where people are sitting with their beers and their arms and whatnot?
I guess I just want to make the point that what we're calling it, as everybody says, in terms of bar as a use, isn't what's in front of you tonight. What's in front, not its use, what it's used for, it's what the assembly of materials is. Not what it's used for, but whether the posts and the panel and the TV and the cover constitute a wall, fence, or other enclosure, and the cabinet, and the cabinet in front, right?
I understand that.
Or a building. So what we're using for, I just, I feel like it's important, I know that's a question, and he can probably answer it better than I, but it.
I couldn't fix food or drink on a wall.
Right, there's a cabinet in front, that's correct. You use it to make drinks.
It was built to house those coolers that are removable, which got approved by the Board of Health, that have caps on them. There's not plumbing, like was mentioned before, for those things, that we pull those in.
No refrigeration.
There's no refrigeration, and as we pull it all in every night, and we put it back out. And all of that's already been approved before. And the whole point of that, this whole thing, was so the TV isn't damaged by all the rain we have here on a frequent basis. And we don't want to keep a bottle in front of a guest where they could reach it, we have to keep it at arms length.
What's this stainless steel thing with the handle and a hinge?
It's just a door we have where we can put extra cups and stuff, and we take them in every night. It's just a little door we put there, a little cabinet door.
Hmm.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's enough, I think, from your side. I'm going to ask the attorney and Kamelitzin to hold until we hear all the public comments, and I'd like you to address all of them if you don't, because otherwise we're going to be here till, you know, September.
My name is Robert Brackett. I'm obviously the dad of the two boys that are the plaintiffs in here. And I'd like to just point out a couple of things here. I'm not an attorney, I'm not on, you know, any boards or anything, but I'm a restaurant person. I've been in the restaurant business for 60 years. And when you're talking about bars here, every bar has a front of the bar, and it has a back of the bar. And they all work together. They're not attached necessarily. They can be, but they don't have to be. The front bar can't work without the back of the bar. You take out this, what you're calling a stand for a TV stand, there's no place for the liquor, there's no place for glassware or plasticware. This has got a function that makes the front of the bar work. Without it, the front of the bar is not working. So it is, you know, it's the whole thing, you've got to look at the whole thing. You've got to look at the whole thing. And to say it's not a structure is crazy. You take the back part by itself, maybe it isn't. But the whole thing is all a structure and it all has to be there for it to work. You know? If it looks like a duck and walks like a duck, it's a duck. And this is a bar. And the whole thing is that way. I mean, it's just, you know, you're trying to split it up and it's really has to be one or the other. You can't take that back section out and have that function, the front section work. So to consider it not part of it is crazy. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public that would like to speak? No, hearing no one. Attorney Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to follow up on a couple of things, mostly clarification. My understanding, it was Attorney Toronto Flores indicated that in 2012, this board issued a special permit. I don't believe that's correct. My review of the Board of Health and Building and CBA files with the town suggests that the Board of Health in 2012 issued, or I should say granted their approval of removing the interior seats and then adding outside convenience seats. There was never any discussion of the bar. The bar in any capacity or form was not constructed in its first iteration until 2015. Importantly, when you look at the overall square footage of this bar, I guess the interpretation is, is that if we have to move the whole thing to within five feet of the setback, then we create a choke point against the rear corner of the building. And that's a safety issue. I'll also ask the board to consider that there are safety issues about this bar structure that haven't been reviewed by the building official as to how it's affixed to the ground, what supports it to the ground, what prevents it from tipping. There has been some testimony here about how the liquor is stored in the, this back panel, whether it's integral. And there's an easy solution here. The easy solution is if we can't move the entire front and rear bar structure to the setback and you need more space on one side, then come to the board and ask for a variance on that one side so you can shift it over. Or reduce the width of the bar a couple of feet so that it's not 15 feet wide. You know, by comparison's sake, my client's bar, which by the way, site plan approval was waived by the building official for my client's bar, and there, a building permit was issued in 2018 for my client's bar where three, a three-bay hand sink, drains, washable surface, coolers, electrical, plumbing, all of that was reviewed by the building official. None of that has occurred for this bar structure in any way, shape, or form. So for the trust and perks to tell you today and represent to you today that it's been fully permitted, that reflects only the fact that the Board of Health has approved seating a number of seats based upon the septic capacity. It has no bearing whatsoever on whether or not there's been a review or a permit granted by the building official. And again, the discussion I believe here today really can be winnowed down to the one issue of whether this bar structure can be parsed into one structure that requires a permit and meets the setback to another that is a fence or other enclosure which does not. And I will submit to you that making that decision is a Pandora's Box that every establishment is watching very carefully and is can't wait to jump on throwing up a wall and being able to serve half the liquor as, as Perks has done. And I would just suggest to you that the process in place protects against that. And bringing these concerns before this board to determine whether or not if a variance is needed or a special permit is needed, those can be fairly addressed in this forum after the building official has had an ability to be able to review all these issues. But simply because the building official has been out there to look at it doesn't mean that it's been reviewed for code issues. There's power there. There's, there's electricity. There's plumbing and supply lines. These are commercial refrigeration units which are stocked. I don't suspect, and I don't know this, but I don't suspect that those are locking units. My suspicion is, is that the kegs that are connected to all the charge lines remain in those coolers night after night after night and are not removed. Maybe the alcohol is taken down and locked up because anybody can walk in off the street. And that's obviously an issue that we don't want to have these fenced units, whether it's a commercial use or residential use, without having that oversight. Because without having that oversight, I don't believe that was the intent of the bylaw in terms of what is undefined as a fence or another structure. Further clarification, there hasn't been a fence. There may have been a fence since the 40s to the rear, separating the rear of Perks property from the ports property. But when my clients went through site plan review extensively to reconfigure the parking, the, you know, $100,000 septic system, that fence was newly installed then. And in fact, if you ever frequent the port, you'll notice that the fence at the back actually is of two varying heights and has an opening in it. Because the abutter wanted to be able to allow his hedge to grow over and not see the fence, so my clients installed a lower fence and an opening so that the abutters could pass through the parking lot on the way to the beach down Seastreet. So that fence was actually erected. There may have been a fence in the 40s as referenced on a plan, but my clients erected that fence conceivably. They believed it was on the property line based upon the site plan, site plan that they had. But the site plan that my clients submitted last May for the permitting of the bar with a three-hand wash sink, washable surface, front to, you know, soup to nuts, front to back, was approved by the building official. There is a permit on file. None of that exists for Perks Bar, whether it's the front bar or the back bar or otherwise. Thank you.
Any questions for Attorney Tomlinson?
None.
Attorney Toronto Flores, would you like to say anything further before I close the public hearing?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Could we hear from Mr. Chesley?
Well, we can if you'd like. We don't need to because we have his opinion. But if you would like to.
I would like to.
All right. Mr. Chesley, could you please address us?
Yes. Good evening. Ray Chesley, building commissioner.
I guess what you want is to hear his rationale, Jim?
I'm sorry?
You want to hear his rationale?
Well, I, I'm only asking because you've probably heard things here tonight that you may not have heard before. You may have heard things that you agree with and you may have heard things you don't agree with in, in your capacity as the building official in the town of Harwich. So if there's anything that you think we need to know from your perspective, if you could tell us, and if there isn't, then I do have a question or two.
I think everything was, you know, pretty much portrayed the way it is. I chose to look at 32517 as the standard for that particular area. I understand the arguments for looking at other parts of the zoning code also. The only thing I would take exception to is that the building department did not waive site plan review for the port. That was the planning board that waived that. That's not the building department.
That is correct. Sorry. I apologize. Okay.
Go ahead.
So my question is, do you agree that the issue before this board tonight is whether or not we agree or don't agree with your interpretation of a, whether it's a structure in this particular case, or that you feel that what this so-called structure is, is actually by definition some form of a fence?
Or, or other.
Or other, which is the other enclosure.
Yes. I think that's the point of the case here.
Are you familiar with anything in the town of Harwich that, other than this particular project for which you have made a similar determination?
No, I don't believe I have. This is, is a unique situation to me.
And if, if you were to come across a fence that was on the line or whatever, and on that fence, people had put hooks to hang buoys for fishing or whatever, or to hang oars or to hang clothing or to hang other objects, that they were just hanging on the fence, would you consider that to be a violation and thus making that fence something other than a fence now a structure?
No, I would not consider that to be a violation. In fact, there are fences in town that seating has been attached to and other things have been attached to. So, but if it acts like a fence, I treat it as a fence.
So you have allowed seating?
Yes.
Seats on a fence in a, in a commercial establishment?
Yes.
That people would be able to sit outside?
Yes.
At the same, the same vein, if someone came to you and said, we want to put a row of seats such as an open table on our property, would you consider that to be a structure? Or would you consider that to be a fence? Oh, not a fence, but another, another, as the bylaw uses the term, other enclosure?
Don't put him in that position.
Well, we have an area at Sacra Tucat Haba that has a table, a bar structure to it. And I do not find that.
And you consider that to be other enclosure and, and it doesn't, in your opinion, would not require a five-foot setback?
Correct.
Okay. I have no other questions.
Anyone else on the board have any questions?
I just had a brief question.
Yes.
As a part of a liquor license for a restaurant or a pouring establishment, are they required under mass general law to inspect yearly for safety of the fire department and the building department?
The state building code requires all liquor establishments to be inspected on a periodic basis.
And, and the fire department signs off as well as that?
The fire department usually accompanies me on the inspection, but we both have to inspect it and sign off on it.
Thanks.
I have one further question.
Which, which you did for this establishment?
I've done for both, both port and Perks and both have passed.
Yes.
One more question, Mr., if I may. When the, when the selectmen have a, have before them an application for a liquor license, an all-alcoholic beverage or beer and wine, do they ever ask your opinion as to whether or not the premises are zoned for the particular use for which they're going to have to give a permit or ask for a permit?
I don't think they, they ask for a particular zoning decision on things. They ask if there are any outstanding issues or claims or, or that type of thing. So they do seek our approval or our input on, before granting a liquor license. And that's on a yearly basis.
If you were aware that, and if someone was requesting a license, a liquor license, and you're also aware that it may not comport with the current zoning bylaws, would you take any action on that on your own?
Yes, we would, we would note that to the, to the selectmen and, you know, make them aware of it.
Thank, thank you.
Okay.
I've got a question.
Uh, Mr. Hutterstein.
Did, did the planning board ever supply you a application or some kind of a notice that they had agreed to this particular bar setup at this particular location? How, did that, did the planning board ever get indirectly involved with you either with documentation or verbal that this was going on, that this was about to happen or, or on and after the fact it happened?
Well, I, are you referring to the latest, latest round? I wasn't here for the other, other parts of it. But we, you know, we are in a closed office here, so we talk back and forth on what's going on there. And we also talk with the health department. And so we all try to end up on the same page when we're all done here. They did not specifically talk about this particular.
Back in, I guess it was in 2008. When did this happen? Excuse me, is 2008, 2016?
The exterior bar?
Yeah, the upgrade bar.
The front portion was constructed in 2015. The, the rear portion was constructed, I believe, in 2017.
2015, 16, 17, somewhere in that range? Were.
I may introduce myself.
Was the planning board ever giving you that information?
I'm sorry.
Wait, 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 wait. Hold on. Let's.
Not specifically.
No.
No. No. So you never got involved with it? You never got involved with it from the planning board standpoint of view while this was being constructed, et cetera?
No.
Or being, or asked to be constructed or whatever? You didn't. You weren't involved?
We were not involved.
You were not involved at all?
Right. No, they have, they would, they would get a decision from the planning board and then if it was an affirmative decision and they were allowed to go ahead, then the next step would be to file for a building permit.
Is this the subject of the other issue?
Right.
Okay. So that answers my question. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Yes, ma'am? You wanted to speak? No? Okay. Anything further for the public? entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
If I may, when you opened the meeting, you asked if I had a question for Mr. Chesley that I could ask for you.
Yes.
Okay. I would like to ask, I would like the board to inquire of Mr. Chesley whether or not, if in fact the rear portion of the bar, under his interpretation, is that it doesn't require a permit, then why was the port required for a full building permit for its? I'm just, I'm saying for comparison's sake, is, is it true that under that interpretation, would the same interpretation apply to the ports bar, in which case it did not need to apply?
I, I don't think the decision with respect to the port has remained to what we have to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any, any more than Attorney Flores so showing his support, you know, alleging that it was less than five feet. That's not to main to our issue here. So I appreciate your question, but I just, I don't want to confuse that situation with the one before us. That's the one we have to look at, I believe.
Thank you.
All right. I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Public hearing closed. All right. Board discussion.
I would like to bring up something that I think the board ought to recognize. Regardless of front and back routines and all of the discussion we've had, you need to look at a picture that we have here. In fact, we have two of them. What's integral to the back of the bar is not only a wall for storage or demonstration, it also includes in the center of it, the TV. It's all integral. All of it's integral. It's one piece. Now, maybe it's movable and maybe it's not. But without it, you don't have a bar. So I, that's my comment. And the pictures demonstrate it without a question. And if you look at the original picture of what the bar looked like with the overhang, all of that's gone. It's never shown. But now it is, and this is the difference.
But I think the issue isn't whether it's an integral bar, it's whether this back piece is a structure or is it a fence, hedge wall, or other enclosure?
And the, the issue is very simple. If it's an integral part of it, which it is, then if the front part is a structure, which it is, then this back part is a structure, which it is. And it has to be within the five feet. And that's my discussion, and I think the pictures prove it.
Okay. That's your position.
That's my position.
My position is that the back wall, having had a counter with appliances, it's got a cooler in it, it's got a couple bins in it, there's something that shows in these pictures that appears to be an under-counter appliance, something, this stainless steel there with a door and a hinge. To me, it's a back, it's the back part of the bar. It's a structure.
Mr. Hilliard.
It's a very difficult decision to make for several reasons. One of which, of course, is we're trying to make an interpretation for something that we don't have an interpretation in the bylaw. And I have always felt strongly that the zoning enforcement officer, who in this case is our building official, has the inherent authority that when something is undefined in the bylaw, that he can apply anything within a reasonable degree to. to determine whether it's on this side of the fence, no pun intended, or on that side of the fence. And I believe that's inherent in officials who otherwise are not given a definition, at least a definition more clear than this. And I, my sense is, after hearing our town's zoning officials speak and looking at this, my opinion is that I believe, I do not believe it's a structure. And I would go along with what the building official has said.
Donahue?
I had referred previously in my remarks to section 17. And I go along with the building commissioner has the authority to make that interpretation.
Okay, uh, I agree with, with Mr. Hilliard. It's a very difficult and, I think, a very close question. And unfortunately, the bylaw is not clear on it. I appreciate Mr. Hilliard, I'm sorry, Mr. Heterstadt's and Ms. Muller's position, why they feel it's a structure. And I, I don't think that's unreasonable. But as I said way back at the beginning, the words "fence, hedge wall, or other enclosure" under 325-17 must have some meaning. I mean, it's in the bylaw. It's not defined anywhere that it means. And I agree with Mr. Hilliard. I think the building commissioner in enforcing the bylaw must be given some le, reasonable leeway to make an interpretation. I can't say sitting here his interpretation is incorrect. I think it's a close question. But I believe his position is, at least is valid, if not more valid, I think it's more valid than the applicant's position. I think he's entitled to have, uh, the benefit of the doubt in his favor because these words have to have some meaning. Otherwise, when will we ever have a situation of an other enclosure? And it is, to me, more like a fence or a wall than it is some of these examples of structures. Building, bridge, trestle tower, framework, retaining wall, tank, tunnel, tent, stadium, pool, reviewing stand, platform, bin, or the like. And I just think this, uh, what do we call it here? I want to be, use the exact word from the plan. What did we call it? The TV stand and TV cover is more like a wall or other enclosure than it is one of the things I just enumerated in the definition of structure. So I believe the building commissioner's interpretation is correct. I think it's a very difficult position to be in. I have no question about it. I, I strongly, strongly agree with you in that respect. What really bothers me is that- and I, I am just gonna, something here tells me that I'm not sure if, if- one thing I don't know is that if the decision has been made by the building inspector on an after-the-fact basis, which it has been done, which he has done, I believe. He didn't do it because it was presented to him. He did it because it was done. And he did it because a lot of things has transpired that we don't have access to, but did influence the decisions. And what I'm concerned about is the fact that we have, that we may opening, we may be opening Pandora's box. May not be, we don't make, we don't make, uh, we don't, surely don't make, uh-
Findings?
Excuse me?
Finding?
We don't make decisions lightly, and we don't make decisions as setting up precedents. But I urge you people to, and I'm not picking on the town person, the personnel involved, not at all. I think he, I think he's done his job. But he's been put in a very difficult position because I believe it was done on an after-the-fact basis rather than before the fact. And in that case, I think it was, I think we need to support him in saying, "You did a great job. You did what you should have done, but not before the fact. You've done it after the fact." And therefore, if we're gonna do something, we need him to work with the parties involved and get the special permit approved for this, for this project. Get it approved that satisfies the setback provisions or an agreement that meets all parties' concerns. Because we've put him in an awful position by, by some of us saying it should be a, it should be a, a structure, and some of us saying it should not be. I think we've done a disservice to him by doing either one. So what I'm trying to do is to get this board to say, "What are we gonna do now? That we put this thing in, in this kind of a position? Don it, people, we ought to fix, we ought to fix it. We ought to fix it so both parties come out with a plus, and we don't set a precedent. And we recognize that it is, it is, it is an integral structure that was put forth and always was intended to be put forth. It had to be, otherwise it wouldn't be operational." And no other, and the bars that have been done subsequently have been approved. But this one didn't go through that process. The question is why? And I'm not gonna delve into why. But in support of what our planning department did or didn't do, and in support of what our young man in the back did, I suggest we find a way to fix it so that both parties come out winners. And I don't know what that is, but maybe it can be done. But I hate to say it go down in flames because some of us don't agree with the definition as it now stands because on an after-the-fact basis, not a before-the-fact. I don't personally think that's, has anything to do with the issue before us, whether it's before the fact or after the fact. It's either it's structure or it's a fence, wall, or other enclosure. I mean, that's the question before us, not when the building commissioner acted. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Holy.
So I, this is not one of our usual cases where Mr. Chesley goes and applies the, the, uh, rules and regulations, and then a party comes before us and asks for a special permit or a variance from the rules. This is a case where, uh, our building inspector, Mr. Chesley, went, uh, made a decision-
He could grant a variance without-
On, on the, uh, using the, the, the bylaws which, which the town gave him. And I think from his testimony, we heard that, that his decision was well reasoned, and it was consistent with his prior, uh, decisions. So the job of this board is to support him unless his decision was arbitrary or capricious. And there is no testimony before this board which suggests that his decision was arbitrary or capricious. The fact that the seven members of this board cannot agree upon whether this comes under section 325-17 or 54 or some other section is only more ammunition to support Mr. Chesley. He did the best he could with the bylaws that the town of Harwich gave him. So unless we, as a board, can find some arbitrary capricious nature to his, his decision, then we must support him. Furthermore, uh, I, I do believe that he interpreted the, the bylaws correctly. I believe he properly dismissed the complaint. And I believe that this request for enforcement is wholly without merit. I think the town council should take note of the fact that this complaint is without merit and it is rooted in a, in a business dispute. And I think that the town should look at recouping costs imposed upon it by this petty bickering, and whether that's through a Rule 11, uh, violation hearing against the parties or what the town wishes to do. But as a taxpayer, I am disgusted with the fact that our town resources are, are being used in this manner. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, well, I'm gonna make a motion in case 2019-21 that the board find that the TV stand and TV cover are a fence, wall, or other structure under the bylaw section 325-17. And therefore, there is no basis for a non-enforcement order by the building commissioner against, uh, Perks, which I, I don't, otherwise known as, what is their name here? Well, I don't know where they are. Otherwise, but as Perks Coffee Shop and Beer Garden, 545 Route 28, Harwich. Anybody want to second that motion?
May I just, um, just as a point of, of question? Should, should we be simply upholding the decision of the building official?
Okay.
As opposed to defining, making a determination?
So, okay.
I'm, I'm just, I mean, as opposed to us determining whether or not this is a structure or it isn't a structure? We're just upholding his determination because he made it, and he made it for his own reasons.
I will amend the motion and restate it that this board will find that the, uh, that we uphold the position of the building commissioner as stated in his letter of June 20, 2019 to Mr. Raymond H. Tomlinson Jr., Tomlinson Law, 1170 Main Street, Suite Number 1, West Barnesville, Mass. 02688 Ray, Perks Coffee Shop and Beer Garden, 545 Route 28, Harwich. And I will, just by reference, incorporate that letter into our decision. Can I have a second? Oh, second, Mr. Donahue's second. And let's have a, a vote by hands-
Yeah.
Because we're not probably gonna be unanimous. All in favor, raise their hand. So, Mr. Hilliard, Mr. Donahue, and Mr. Ryer.
I, I'm, I'm voting to uphold Mr. Chesley's authority here.
Okay, and Ms. Muller. Uh, all opposed. Mr. Heterstadt. So-
May I, may I ask a question of the, of the board first?
Well, let me just give the decision, four to one.
Okay.
The building commissioner's decision is upheld.
What is the requirement? Is this a, is it a supermajority or is it just simply a majority? I don't know the answer.
I think it's just the majority.
Supermajority.
Oh, it is still a supermajority.
It is, it's just like very-
Okay, so-
Okay, thank you.
If it passes four to one, then-
I would have never agreed to it.
Oh, thanks.
You, you need a supermajority to overturn it.
Yeah, to overturn.
To overturn.
Okay, but the uphold's majority.
To uphold.
To uphold, you need, you just need, um-
Three to two, simple major. Thank you.
I'm sorry, uphold, you need?
To uphold, to uphold him, you would only, you would only have needed two people. Because you need a supermajority to overturn it.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I see. Well, in any event, it's upheld.
Is my understanding correct that this motion discusses upholding Mr. Chesley's decision and authority rather than whether we agree with the nature of this thing?
Do you want me to read back the motion?
Well, that is his position, which has been incorporated by reference into the motion.
That we're upholding his decision, so-
I, I uphold his decision for the same reasons that other people have said, that if the board is this split, then he, it's unclear.
It's a motion, I mean, that case is done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Can we take a two-minute break?
Yes.
Sewer's next, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's it.
Yeah, Sewer's.
Sewer's next. Assisted, by the way.
I think, I think that-
No, we have a 40B discussion.
It's too politically motivated to be-
I didn't agree here. Yeah, yeah. I'm only gonna be here about the, about why it's a set or not even useful use. Because Chris just left with a question about that.
From KP Watson, Watson, yeah, from that outside.
Do you want to sit up here? Sit up here too, or do you wanna, yeah, do you want to squeeze three in there? I think you're, I think you're gonna be able to answer the most questions, right? Because I'm, I'm not gonna be, I don't think I'm gonna be a star of the show.
See, I uphold his decision.
At least I'm holding it on.
Yes, that's right.
There's no other way to support him.
We don't want to make law. We just want to uphold his decision or deny it.
But I believe it's a star.
You had no choice.
I mean, it was a very close question. You could have voted against it, it still would have passed.
Thanks, Ray. The issue, what do you say to the other cases?
He asked, he asked for this.
That would be, that would be a disaster.
Yeah, was it?
It's not our position to determine it.
You couldn't do anything. Would you either grant a waiver or you'd get a special permit?
Go the ladies' room.
But it's just that you, you, you were put in a position you couldn't change. I had these thoughts in my mind. You were screwed to stop it.
I was, I was convinced, that it was-
It's a structure.
I was close to it.
Look at the pictures.
Yeah, but that's not how you define it, right? We don't have it there. That's why I asked him questions. You have other issues in the town. They, he has seating. He said you can put seating on it. He, he thinks that is not a structure. You can have a bar with seats, that's not a structure.
I, I heard all that, and that made me waver. But to me, it's all part of one thing.
But we don't have a definition of structure.
And there's protection of people and property, and that counter, to me, is-
Whatever. It's a real issue. But anyway.
Shit, and I just caved.
Amy?
Amy Quessel, yes.
Jim Hilliard.
And it's only gonna get worse.
Amy Quessel, town council.
Hi, Amy, pleasure, I'm sure, how are you? Which is, stands for?
It was for the main page.
Oh, sure. You just changed it to KP.
He was, he's not anymore.
He was with my firm. I got a lawsuit. Way off the Cape.
I mean, I, without, there's, you-
With Connor and Hilliard, probably, yeah. We do zoning stuff, we do, I don't do it anymore.
But who did I deal with there?
You could have dealt with Brian Almeida.
Oh, yes, 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 um, we just, we just, um-
I don't know how the debate's going.
Sure, so we're dealing, um, we have a Dedham case.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the, um, Dedham 800 LLC. We're on the same side, because, um, I represent Dedham.
Right, right, oh, you do?
Yes, yeah.
Peter Sock?
Yeah, okay.
Peter, Peter trained in our office.
He's a, um, he's a regular.
Oh, he's, I know, he's a freaking flyer.
Yeah, he is, yes, so, um-
Planning board, he's, he's everywhere.
Yeah, so we are desperately waiting for a decision on that case-
Oh, you are?
From Judge Long, but he's retired, so we should get decisions.
Can I just get a clarification for you? Were you saying that maybe that they needed a supermajority?
Yeah, because that was the request. The request was to overturn.
Okay, so?
So it's like a very mandatory, you need four.
So you need to overturn, they wouldn't need to have four.
To overturn, overturn, but they only need two, not one. But they got four.
Got it.
So it is confusing. I think we do. Um, so, you know what, we should, we should talk, we should talk to David. Does he wanna, um- David, do, how do you want to do these? Because, um, do you, uh, do you want to do these one at a time? Or do you wanna-
I think we have to, because there-
So we were just, yeah.
There's at least some of Butters out here.
So I think, okay, so I think we have to, yeah, okay.
Do you?
Yeah.
Just one second.
Still here. That's a good thing. Okay. What I want to know, Jamie, is how do you get to have your name in there in all capital letters in the rest? Is it? I had no idea. It's that important, Jim.
I was gonna put exclamation points at the end of the tape.
That would've been better.
Then it wasn't enough room.
Just, just asking, I'm not suggesting anything, just asking. I had no idea. I think that gives me more authority, though, doesn't it?
It does.
I think so, I'm not sure.
Okay, we're gonna be back in session and just for the tape, the video recording tape, since we don't have a person here, I think the tape ran all during the recess, but you can delete it whenever you get around to it, whoever's gonna do the video recording, because we were in recess. We are back again, so we will call the next case, please, Mr. Hilliard.
Oh, yes.
Oh, wait, Ms. Muller isn't here, wait a minute, sorry. We are not, we are not back yet. You gonna do each one individually?
Twenty twelve, nineteen twenty-two.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yeah, twenty-two.
Yeah.
Twenty-two is.
I think we're not doing one at a time.
You have this one from the board, huh?
No.
Okay, Mr. Hilliard.
Okay, I'm gonna read this first and then I'll go into the specifics of the case. Town of Harwich, through its agent, Christopher Clark, Town Administrator, is applying for variances pursuant to Mass. General Law, Section Four, Chapter Forty, A, Section Ten, and if required, special permits for defined, quote, essential services, end quote, to construct wastewater pumping stations within the setbacks as executed to the Board of Selectment's Phase Two Sewer and Sewer Pump Station easements at the following locations. Mr. Chairman, are we taking these one at a time?
Yes, I think we should, because we do have some of butters, so I think that's.
Case 2019-22, property is located at 24 Church Street, MAP 75, partial G seven dash ten eleven, in the RR zoning district. Owners, Stephen and Laurie Jelbert, Jelbert? Okay.
Okay, we'll have voting on this case, Mr. Hilliard, Ms. Muller, Mr. Heterostat, Mr. Donahue, and Mr. Armstrong. Mr. Coppoli and I will not vote on this particular case. And I do need to disclose, I am a resident at 73 Church Street, and I'm not voting, but I would not be influenced by that fact, in any event. Counsel, if you could identify yourself and who's at table with you, please.
Thank you, I'm Amy Quessel, I'm Town Council.
Griffin Ryder, Town Engineer.
Mike Judice, CDM Smith.
Okay, welcome. You could present your petition, please.
So I think, we'll have Mike, we're gonna have Mike start with the, with what the project is, and I think what we'll do is we'll, we'll start with a project overview and the reason for the project, and we won't do this four times, don't worry, so.
Perfect.
So we'll, we'll do that and then get into each project separately and the relief that we're seeking for each project.
Perfect.
Great. So, Mr. Chair, I'll give a quick overview, as Amy mentioned, for the project, certainly any questions, feel free to, to ask them at any time. Basically, this is the Phase Two sewer system that most, if not all of you are probably familiar with. We've been charged to design the system for the town that will eventually sewer approximately 600, 650 homes in East Harwich, sending flow to Chatham. The town has an interminable agreement with the town of Chatham to send their flow to their wastewater treatment plant. So this, this Phase Two is intended to flow into Chatham. So we've designed this system to maximize the number of properties that can get into the system by gravity. However, just due to the topography of the area, there are several pumping stations that are required to take this Phase Two area into Chatham. We have a total of six pumping stations throughout Phase Two. Five of them have structures associated with them, and those structures, I'll talk about in a little bit in a second. One of the pumping stations does not have a structure and one of the five that does have a structure is actually within the town right-of-way. So we have four pumping stations that have structures that are on private property that we were seeking relief from setbacks for. So, and we can go through each of those. So we'll start with 24 Church Street. I believe you have site plans. I do have architectural plans as well that you may or may not have, would you?
I would like to see something that would show what this is gonna look like from the street into the property.
Perfect.
What, what the homeowners would be looking at.
Absolutely.
And one of the things that I just wanted to clear up real quick is that we are also seeking a special permit for, for essential services.
For the use, right.
And for the, exactly, for the use. Now, under the Harwich bylaw, municipal use is an exempt use, and so Mr. Chesley and I had, had, we were grappling with this about whether this was a municipal use or whether this was essential services. Now, the actual entire sewer use would be considered a municipal use, but because these are components of the sewer use, I had to do some research and as I looked into it some more, there is, there's actually a case out there that says this is essential, these are more essential services. And unfortunately, the Harwich bylaw requires a special permit for all essential services. So, that's why we're seeking the special permit, and that's why, that's why we're here for the use of the special permit, even though it kind of seems like it's municipal use. So we're here, that's why we're here for that.
May, so, this is being placed on private land, not town land?
Correct, so the, the one, the one pump house that's in the right-of-way, as you know, zoning doesn't apply to, to the right-of-way, so we're not seeking any relief for that one. But the one, we have easements on the other four.
You have placed them on town, easements that exist?
Easements over private property.
Yes, they exist.
Yes.
The easements currently exist.
Recorded as of last week, yes.
Correct.
Last, okay, all right.
Are you saying, in other words, that the homeowners have no recourse, they have to allow this use on their property?
They've signed easements, correct? They've given easements to the town.
Okay.
Recently.
Okay, it's, they weren't implicit, they have signed the.
They're on, they're on record.
Okay.
But you're also, you also need a variance.
Yes, that's for the actual placement of the.
Right, just so the board understands, they need a use permit.
Yeah.
And they need a variance for each one of these cases.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, proceed, please, yes.
If I may, Mr. Chair, so, just in terms of the, the look of the structures, we have two renderings here for two of the four stations, but certainly you can tell the similarities from, from each of them, that both four will have a very similar look.
Thank you.
So, in terms of the first one.
Oh, my God.
A quick review of the site plan for the first one, 24 Church Street. Part of this is the Church Street South statement, so you should have this site plan. So basically, the intent here is to make these as attractive as you can make essentially a wastewater pumping station. The direction from the town was to include as much of the equipment for the station inside a building. A lot of times, as is the case in one of the stations, we just have an electrical pedestal outside by itself, it's a smaller station, doesn't require a generator. The four that are subject to this hearing require generators because they're larger pumping stations, so in the case of a power failure, we want a generator to, to power the pumps during that situation. So, inside the structure, and it's a precast structure, for three of the four stations, including this one, mentioned, are roughly 14 by 17 feet. We do, we tried to put them as close to the right-of-way as possible so that we didn't impact the properties as much as possible. So inside the building will be the generator and all the electric, electrical equipment. Outside, there's a separate wet well that the pumps go in, that sits down in the actual wastewater and pump up the hill. So in this particular case, if you look at the second page that I handed out to you, that shows, on the back of the sheet, is the existing site as it looks now, looking in towards the property, and then rendering shows what the structure itself would look like. Again, it's roughly 14 by 17 feet, peak roof with asphalt shingles, fiber cement siding to make it look like a large shed essentially, try to make it as attractive as you can. Did some screening on the back and on the side, some arborities, and then some plantings to come out.
Could I ask you just to show that to the audience back there?
Ouch.
The folks in the audience, that's the proposal for the Church Street.
This is the 24 Church Street, and the residence is off to the right of the hill. You can actually see it in the photo.
One thing Mike mentioned is, from a town perspective, there was consideration placed on, you know, keeping these structures close to the roadway so there was less property impact, which is why we're before you tonight. If we had pushed them back onto the property, which would've been more property impact, we might not have needed a variance, we might still be before you for the special permit, but the variance would've, wouldn't have been needed. If we did not build these in a structure, I think the structure's the right thing to do because it's a better aesthetic. If they weren't built in a structure and they were left sort of open with potential separate pieces, a generator, you know, valve chamber and things like that, we might not be before you tonight. So those are some of the considerations that we went through, through the design process of this. Just wanted to make sure that was known.
Is the generator gonna be inside the structure?
It is. The generator and all the electrical equipment are inside of the structure.
And how, to me, the only factor that I would see would be noise. How loud is this gonna be? Because generators, when they, you know, kick off, can be quite noisy.
They, they can be, and we, we did outfit the building with acoustical louvers that will help cut down on some of the noise. Obviously, they're only gonna be running in the, in the case of power outages, however, they will be exercised on a regular basis just to make sure they're operational.
I was more concerned about that, yeah.
And we've talked to some of the homeowners adjacent to these stations that, you know, we can have that obviously happen during the day, so it's not 10, 11 o'clock at night they would be exercised, it'd be during the middle of the day when they wouldn't impact.
How long do they run for in the exercise, approximately?
Just a few minutes, 10, 15 minutes, I'd say, maybe. It's not an extended period of time.
How often is that?
Okay, thank you. Probably once a month.
Wait, Mr. Hilliard, I'm sorry, I jumped out of term, Mr. Hilliard.
Go ahead, you're ready.
No, no, go ahead.
Okay. In this particular show, what you're showing here, what's the distance between that and the house? If you know.
I don't know off the top of my head.
Is there an average, is there a distance you need, would you like to keep away from the home?
We've tried to maximize that as best we could on all of the properties.
Okay.
As I said, in relation to this particular site, the house sits up, up the hill a little bit.
Okay.
So there is a big distance. I don't have exact measurement.
And, sorry?
I think it's approximately 80 feet or so.
Okay.
Away.
And when you acquired the easements, was there full disclosure to the homeowners as to what it would look like, where it would be placed, and so on and so forth?
So, Chris Clark, Town Administrator, met with each of the property owners at least once, if not several times, to talk about it. One of the, you know, part of the feedback he got, as, as Griffin alluded to, was people wanted to make it as attractive and as aesthetically pleasing as possible, obviously have the least amount of impact. We didn't have these particular renderings prepared at the time that he met with them, but we did have a general description of what the building would look like, and I think, I think we've met what that description was in terms of the size and.
Was the landowners compensated for the easements?
So there were appraisals done for each of the easements and there's an easement award associated with each of the takings, yes.
And everyone conformed and everyone agreed voluntarily to sign the easements over to the town?
Yes, and, and the town, we also agreed to attempt to get variances to bring the, to bring the structures as close to the street as possible.
And that, in, in Maine, is the real issue, why you need the easements to keep these structures away from the homeowners' residence?
That, yes, that, and to keep the easements as small as possible.
Because you also have access easements as well as the building easement.
So there's a permanent easement associated with it for future maintenance as well. As you can see, on the, on the site plan, there's a little access driveway to pull vehicles in for maintenance, that they'll be visited typically daily just to make sure everything's operating properly. There's also a temporary construction easement to give us a little more room to actually construct them that goes away once the construction is completed.
So you're looking for both a variance and a special permit?
For each, for each property, yes.
Each, each one of these?
Yes.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Ms. Muller.
Actually, Mr. Hilliard asked my questions about the process for securing the easements and whether there was compensation.
Okay, Mr. Hilliard. I'm, I'm sorry, looking, looking at him, it's getting late.
You're the only one getting late.
Mr. Heterostat. It's getting late, I understand. Is the reason for a temporary easement just to give you access for material and building, et cetera, et cetera? And at the completion of all of that, will that, will that easement disappear, so the only easement they have is the one that's inside, it says whatever it is, North 27 by 42, whatever? That's where you have, and that's all there is in the, in the special permit and the waiver, no, and the variance, is just the permanent, it's not the temporary?
Correct, the temp, as you alluded to, the temporary goes away after construction is completed, it's, is taken to give us more room or give the contractor more room to actually install the pumping station to stage equipment.
Yeah, I understand that, but, but that's, is that a, is that a permanent variance?
No, the, the, you, the relief that we're seeking is not for the easements, the relief that we're seeking is for the actual structure and the use, which is the use being the pumping station, which is within the structure, so.
Permanent, the permanent one is what you're looking for with the, with the permanent, if you will, permanent variance.
The, the actual structure is what we're seeking.
Right. Not the, not the temporary easement. That's just to facilitate getting at the site.
Correct.
And, and construction. Okay, so that's all temporary. All right, thank you. I'm not gonna vouch on this case, but I just want to remind the board, I think counsel already said it, but under the code, special permits may be issued for the use, whether it's essential service, facilities, utility, or municipal use. From our purposes, it doesn't really matter, both are entitled to a special permit. It's a little unusual variance case, but I think the test can be met because of the unique situation here. I mean, technically, it doesn't fit the four corners of the statute, but to fit them, they'd have to take a huge amount, just not, of land, it's just not practical. So I think there is certainly a hardship, and we can take a reasonable position as a board that the requirements for the issuance of variance have been met, no substantial detriment to the public good, and certainly no substantial derogation to the intent or purpose of the bylaw. So I just.
I've actually argued that the, it's actually the shape of the easement being small, because we didn't want to take, you know, a large easement. So, the shape, you know, soil shape, topography, we're, we're going with shape being small.
Right.
And so the hardship is that the shape of it was so small that we can't meet the setbacks.
Exactly. And I guess that was my point, because otherwise, I'd have to take a huge piece, and that's, that's nuts, that's crazy. Mr. Donahue. The generator is natural gas.
Correct.
Okay, and it's gonna be exercised only once a month?
That'll ultimately be up to the, to the town that's operating the system to decide how often they want to do that. It may be twice a month.
So the building is gonna be completely insulated, so the sound will not carry to the homeowner. The rendering that's in the picture here, the shrubs that are being.
The rendering that's in the picture here, the shrubs that are being placed, are they going to be matured shrubs as opposed to things that come up from the ground just to reduce the sound? But I'm assuming the shrubs, the bushes that are shown are probably somewhere in the area five or six feet high anyway.
Correct.
Are those what are going to be planted in there? What type of a shrub?
The, the type that are shown, yes, the exact size, they may start a little smaller than that, they may be a little more mature in the, in the rendering.
So they have to reduce the sound, so forth and so on.
Mostly visual aesthetics, I suppose they would have some impact on, on sound attenuation potentially, but it's more for visual screening.
Thank you. Shrum, Shrum.
No question, thank you.
Mr. Capoli.
A couple, so you'd mentioned that one of the reasons you had to come before us was because you're putting a structure up as opposed to your other option, which, what would that, what would that look like? A slab with the equipment on it with a chain link fence around it, or?
That's one option, but in certain, certainly the, so the different components, the generator itself would be a freestanding generator, certainly a lot less attractive to look at than the build, than the building that we have. And all the electrical equipment, so electrical equipment would typically be in a pedestal. So it would be typically, for this size station, these size stations, maybe six feet long by four feet tall and a couple of feet deep, so that would be, you'd be looking at that pedestal, you'd be looking at the generator. Chain link fences would be an option if security were an issue, and then clearly having everything in the building does lend itself to provide security for all the equipment.
Just a last question. You're showing us some, some renderings. What sort of recourse does the former property owner have if, if it doesn't look like this? If it, it looks horrible?
The intent is for it to look like this, this is, this rendering is taken right from our architectural drawings, you know, sections, elevations.
I'm just wondering if you gave them any assurances of, you're coming before us, showing us renderings.
As I think, as I indicated, these renderings weren't prepared at the time that Mr. Clark had his discussions, but the general description of what they were intended to look like, I think we've received some pretty positive feedback for the most part from some residents who we have spoken to. The intent certainly is to make it look as it appears in this.
I do not doubt your veracity, it's just I, I wonder what sort of protection we're giving our residents to, to ensure that, we're, we're voting on this based on your, your representation, so I just want to make sure that if, if this board's voting for it, that our citizens are going to get this, not...
This is our design, and part, part of our job is to make sure the town gets what they paid us to design and they're paying the contractor to build, so this was based on our design. So as far as we're concerned, this is what the town would get.
All right, thank you.
Would anybody in the public like to speak to this application? Yes, sir, if you could come to the podium and introduce yourself, please.
Hi, good evening, my name is Scott Morris, and my wife and I own the property at sixteen and eighteen Church Street. Sixteen is a buildable lot that's, that does not have a dwelling on it. We live at eighteen in a single family home, and our driveway is, if you looked at, that chart's kind of turned, you can't see it, but our driveway is pretty much the left of that photograph. I, I have a lot of concerns about this rendering and this plan. Church Street, as most of you know, is a very busy street. You come around that curve, I've lived there since two thousand and one, and I've seen some pretty nasty accidents on that end of Church Street. The other thing that concerns me is I put generators in for a living, and they are noisy. I understand it's going to be an insulated building, but they are going to have to be exhausted to the exterior, and in most cases, with a standby unit of this size, the exhaust is, you know, pretty loud. The other thing is, is my property at eighteen, we're right at the bottom of that hill. Okay? So in terms of who, who maintains this building and the equipment that's inside of it, I'm kind of a worst-case scenario kind of guy, and we have a significant failure here, and we have a pretty bad accident. Who's responsible for all that? I'm assuming it's the town, but unfortunately, I'm the kind of the guy in the hole. The thing that really bothers me about this whole plan is the town owns, and I could be wrong, roughly thirteen acres across the street that used to be the Marini property. Was there any discussion on putting this on that property and maybe being able to bring it off the road slightly? And you won't even know it's even there. To, to put this on, on Jalbert's property, and I would like to also just comment on something I heard earlier in this discussion, that all the owners signed off on easements here. It's my understanding that that wasn't a, greeted with open arms. I believe there was discussion of eminent domain and so on and so forth. So it wasn't, you know, where do I sign, this is the greatest thing to ever happen to, to his property. So again, there's a, there's a magnitude of, of issues here, and as I was sitting back there listening, it's also my understanding that thus far, a lot of the proposals that have come in have been grossly over budget. So one of my concerns is if we start cutting somewhere to save some money, that kind of might be where we start. And I, I just, I think it's a bad idea of where this particular unit is being proposed, and I would strongly suggest that this board possibly look into the possibilities of putting this pump station on, across the street in an area where you won't even know it's there. So I, I thank you for the opportunity.
Well, I was going to give them a chance to...
Oh, I'm sorry. I was going to ask them a question. Sorry. I can respond to a couple of the comments, and certainly appreciate the, the feedback. In terms of who is responsible, as he, as he said, obviously, once these are constructed, they're turned over to the town, so the town will be responsible for operating and maintaining, maintaining these systems. The Marini property, it's a great question, that was the first thing that we looked at when we were locating the site. As you, if you're familiar with the area, this sits down at the, as he indicated, the bottom of the hill, and that's why we need a pumping station here, you need to pump up to, to Queenian Road to get into Chatham. So we did look at the Marini property as a potential location when we first started reviewing potential sites. Unfortunately, that property is under the control of the Conservation Commission, it was purchased with conservation funds or community...
It's Article ninety-seven.
So it's Article nine, what's called an Article ninety-seven, which requires a, an act of the legislature to allow a, a different use. So that was deemed, it's a very difficult path to follow and...
It requires two thirds, it requires two thirds of the Conservation Commission, two thirds of town meeting, and two thirds of the legislature, both have, both the legislature and the senate, to release it from Article ninety-seven.
It, it can't be condemned?
It cannot, you cannot take it by, you cannot take it any other way. It's, it's, it's a very, very, very difficult.
I know, did you hear that in the back, sir?
It, it's, it's very difficult.
I, I did, I did, and I mean, this whole project is going to be difficult. I mean, we're talking about a pretty significant project, tens of millions of, of dollars, and, you know, to, to hopefully spend the rest of my life here and have to look at this thing, you know, my, my kids and myself at the end of the driveway, you've got this structure sitting there, all because it might be kind of difficult to put it where it typically, where it kind of belongs. This isn't going in next week, I don't believe. I mean, we ha, I believe we have the time, and I mean, if resources are a problem, maybe we figure out a way, but I would certainly like to look further into putting that across the street rather than just say, oh, too much...
It, it's not necessarily work, it's near impossible.
Would it have a, a design impact if you had to relocate this pump station on the main line coming down Church?
In terms of the functionality of the system?
In Church of holding up everything else if you had to...
Well, holding it up, certainly, I mean, we've, the town's taken the easements, we've designed this at this location, I think to Amy's point, it's just that it's, it's a very high bar, that if not impossible, it's nearly impossible to get...
It's near, it's near impossible to do, to get, and not only that, but there's a lot of times, once property, even if the legislature votes to get it out of Article ninety-seven, E O E E A steps in and says no. So the Secretary of E O E E A can step in and say, the Executive Office of Environmental and Energy, Energy and Environmental Affairs can step in and override it. There's a reason, Article ninety-seven is part of the Constitution, and it's, it's, it's almost impossible to do.
Doesn't sound like it's doable, sir. I appreciate your concern, but...
Yeah. I, I really wish more thought would have been put into this because, you know, to, to do what they did to that thirteen acres is great, I, I think it's a, it was a wonderful thing that the town and the conservation did, but to just go ahead now and, and force this on private property owners, it's wrong. It's wrong.
I, I do, I do need to clear up that there, there was no eminent domain, there was, these were easements, these were easements given to the town.
Because they were threatened with eminent domain.
There was no eminent domain.
Mr. Hilliard.
Leo, I have a question for the gentleman. So this is, this is your driveway that we're looking at, which runs next...
Yeah.
Sure. That's your driveway?
My driveway is like right here.
It's right there?
Yeah.
Okay. So if you, I, I think, I think I heard you say something about the busyness of the street, so if you're leaving your driveway, whether you're heading north to south, east to west, does that building, as it is commonly structured, well, you wouldn't know because it's not there, but is it setback enough so it's not going to block his view?
Where's the road? There's the fire hydrant right there, which you can see, there's the telephone pole, this is all very accurate. This is, to look back the other way...
That's what I'm asking my question. Is that, do we know, how fast is that setback?
It's setback three feet.
Three? From the town's property?
From the property line.
From the property line, not from the street.
Not from the state road.
That's thirteen feet?
Thirteen, yeah.
Yeah, it's thirteen feet probably.
How far is it setback from the, it's on his property, but how far is it setback?
It's not his property.
No, that's not, not on my property.
It's his neighbor's.
My neighbor's driveway.
Sorry, oh, okay, okay.
This is his property, this is the neighbor's property, and this is where it's going.
Okay, okay. I guess my question is, does this interfere with his line of sight?
Right, it's not his property.
Thirteen feet from the road.
Probably not, yeah.
Okay. It's the only question I have.
Yes, Roy.
I'm not sure, my name is Roy Turwilleger, and I'm not sure it's appropriate now if you're only going to take one of these at a time.
Now, you can speak if you'd like.
Because I'm, I'm going to butter to the one for one thirteen Church Street, and I just have a couple of comments. One is, I noticed that behind the pumping station on one thirteen Church Street, which is on private land, it's very close to the backyard of number eight Marshview Land. I don't know whether you have drawings that show that, but boy, the, the distance between the back end of that pumping station and the backyard of number eight Marshview is pretty close. It doesn't affect me personally because my house is over on one hundred Church Street, and I've got plenty of woods between it, but I just want to make that comment. My other comment is, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the design for the pumping station, and I see, one of the things is that they're supposed to have fiber cement straight edge shingles on the front. Now, I don't sure what fiber cement straight edge shingles look like, but it doesn't look like what I see in that picture, and my only comment is, I hope you can make these buildings look as much like Cape Cod structures as you can, which is pretty much what this structure does. That's my comment.
It's fiber cement shingles, is that like hardy board?
It's a composite material.
Yeah.
Will it be similar to the, the one on Barn Hill Road there in Chatham? I don't know, are you familiar with...
On Barn Hill, we did visit several of the stations in Chatham, and that was one of the, that was one of the sites that we saw.
I don't know if the board has seen that.
Similar, similar look to that.
Yeah, it, it looks sort of like the picture here.
Tended to look like...
I mean, the dimensions might be a little different, but it's kind of an attractive structure. Well, let me put it another way, it's not an unattractive structure.
As attractive as a public structure.
It's a sewer pumping station, it is. Okay, anything further from the public? All right, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. So moved. Second. Public hearing, it's closed. Any further discussion by the board, or any discussion?
Before Mr. Morris stood up to speak, and I think it's become more urgent now, these are, this is an attractive design, but I think it could be softened with a lattice or a trellis, and that that option should be there at the, at the town's expense, not the homeowner's expense. Certainly, that kind of vegetation, you know, with a climbing hydrangea or something would make it more attractive. If it were on my house, and I've done this...
On the street side?
My, on the two sides of my garage, we've done a trellis.
So you want it on the, on the street side?
Uh...
No, I don't think you want it on the street side, because that will affect the line of sight.
So on the side where the door is?
You know, hydrangeas get very big.
I thi, I think you want it on the side that people are going to be seeing, like Mr. Morris and the people whose...
Side of the door, okay.
Where the door is?
Okay, got it.
Something.
Sure.
Okay.
I don't know.
You can look at that.
They'd have to move the road a little bit there.
Yeah, it doesn't look like there's...
I have a question. These are all electrical generators, and the power is, is fed by what, electric or is it gas?
It's natural gas, sir.
It's natural gas?
Yes.
And is the street, Church Street, already sufficient to handle the amount of gas you need for pressure, et cetera?
Yes, it is.
And all the rest of them the same way?
Correct.
Oh. So thus...
Coordinated with the, with the gas.
So thus comes the noise from the generator, it's because you're using natural gas, and is there an exhaust issue at all?
Exhaust in terms of noise, or...
Does it smell?
I, I, I don't believe that, so there's an exhaust stack coming through the roof of the building that will stick up several feet, so that any fumes that are coming out will be exhausted up into the atmosphere, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't entertain that there'd be any issues.
Is that the exhaust stack?
No, it's, you, that's actually part of the, the controls, the alarms for the building that... You can see the stack on the backside up here. You're seeing in the front there is actually the, the antenna for the alarm system, so that you consider a piece of the stack on the backside of the building.
And the sewer line is, is also in the center of the street, right?
Essentially, generally in the center of the street, yes, sir.
Center of the street, is that where the gas is right now, roughly?
The gas, I believe, is on the south side of the street, so we'll bring a service across. Typically, there's gas on one side of the street and water on the other side of the street, so we'll bring a gas service in from the other side of the street.
Okay. Thank you, that answers my questions. Anything further?
I have a, one comment.
Take a motion in the case for...
I, I have some, some comments. It's, I, I appreciate the, I didn't get his name.
Scott.
The gentleman's Scott's comments. I appreciate Town Council's assertions that it would be near impossible, but I think the board should hold off on voting on this until the feasibility of placing it across the street is, is fully researched. Perhaps Town Council can speak to the E E O O or whatever the alphabet soup was to see if they would support it. I know it, it might be a little bit of work, but I, I think that the town owes that to its residents at the very least, not just to him, but to all the abutters and to all the abutters who will come after him. So I, I'm not voting, but I would urge the board to maybe hold off on this vote and ask Town Council to look into the, the possibility.
What's the timeline? Excuse me, what would, if, let's assume for a moment, I, I just, let me finish my question. Let's assume for a moment that you said, okay, we'll, we'll look into it, we'll hold off until we, what is the timeline that you, you're expecting to start this construction or work versus a timeline that you obviously know, what's it going to take you to get a total yes or a total no? On moving it across the street?
So in this particular case, so that phase two has been broken up into two construction contracts. We've already bid...
Okay.
We've already bid Contract One, and the town's on the verge of awarding the contract to the contractor. Two of the pumping stations that we haven't discussed yet are in that Contract One. This pumping station and the other one on Church Street are in Contract Two. The intent is to bid those next month, open bids.
Is that a year from now you would expect to start construction?
Start construction, it, it all depends on the contractor, how he schedules his work. He may want to start on the pumping stations sooner rather than later, so...
Having been involved with legislation in my prior life, I know it would take you two years to get that.
I was going to say, it's a two-year process.
Yeah, I know it's a two-year process.
Way, way more than that, yeah. Because you, we have to also factor in the fact, town, you have to go to a town meeting, so a town meeting happens only twice a year.
Right.
So it's going to be way more than that.
I was just curious to see how that, so that would just stop your project?
Oh, yeah.
It would.
It would stop this whole project.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not going to vote on the case, I don't think it's reasonable to defer in this case. I mean, this project's already behind schedule, and I don't think we should make it any further behind for what probably would be a fruitless exercise in any event.
Yeah, I think it would too.
I will entertain a motion in the case. Mr. Hilliard, why don't you give us one, because we need a use and a variance.
Yeah, I move to approve the, first, the variance to allow the setback. Looking for my papers. Here I am. To construct a wastewater pumping station within the setbacks as executed by the Board of Selectment Phase Two Sewer Pump Station easements at the location of 24 Church Street, map 75 parcel G seven dash 10. That's the variance. And then I move to approve the special permit, defined as essential services.
Do we want these as separate motions?
Yes.
Do we want these as separate motions?
Yes.
We could combine the motion.
Well, that's fine, okay.
No, just, we'll combine it.
Okay.
Variance and special permit.
To approve the special permit for essential services, excuse me, to construct wastewater pumping stations within the setbacks as executed to the Board of Selectment Phase Two Sewer and Sewer Pump Station easements at the property located at 24 Church Street, map 75 parcel G seven dash 10 and 11.
Second. Second, um, okay, Mr. Armstrong. Any discussion by the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The permit granted. Did you get a variance?
No, it's both.
What's that?
Both.
You need a variance too.
Both.
Yeah, he, he did. Well, I, I just heard special permit, you didn't say variance.
He did first.
You didn't.
He did.
He did answer the motion. Okay, the variance in accordance with the bylaw, 325 dash 51? Yes. Okay. Okay, that, I'm, I'm going to stamp the plans, but is this Church Street North Pumping Station?
No.
The one you just approved is Church Street South, sir.
Right, okay, I do not have plans for that.
If, is this one?
Here. For some reason...
Here, Dave, take mine.
They stuck, uh, Church Street North in my package.
Is it full set? I'll come up for...
You guys need these plans back?
Oh, wait, this is, oh, okay, full set, wait.
Souvenir?
Close.
You don't need any more?
Here, let's... That in. Is it Church Street North?
We have a town meeting with...
Yes.
I think I've had a look, because I was at that meeting.
Church Street North. Okay. Did you get this one too? This is Church Street, did you get that one?
Nothing to do with you.
I don't know why I didn't get these plans in my package, but...
I tried to get the garden club involved in...
Okay, Mr. Hilliard.
Restoring up these buildings like they have the shed, the bathrooms at Red River Beach.
Great idea, sure.
That's a great idea.
Case number 29, 2019 dash 23, property located at 113 Church Street, map 88, parcel T six, the RR zoning district, excuse me, owners Donald and Sonya Gorman.
Okay, on this case, we'll have Tony Hilliard, Mr. Hedersted, Mr. Donahue, and Mr. Capoli, and Mr. Armstrong, and I will not vote. But just once more for the record, introduce yourselves, you might as well do that for each case and then proceed, thank you.
Sure. Amy Questle, KP Law, Town Council.
Griffin Rider, Town Engineer.
Mike Judice, CDM Smith.
Thank you, and we'll dispense with the general background, you could just go to the specific case, thanks.
Specific site is, is 113 Church Street, or as referred to, Church Street North. The property, I think you have copy of the easement plan, the actual house for this property sits quite a bit to the north, up on that side of Continental Drive. This, this area of the site is somewhat isolated from the main residence, there is a big depression between the site and the residence, so a lot of this relocation, again, trying to minimize the impact to the property owner. This particular building is actually slightly larger than the one on Church Street South. It's approximately 14 feet by about 23 and a half feet. The reason that this is bigger is the town wanted us to actually redesign the station from what was a submersible station as the Church Street South station was, to, to install the suction lift type station. And in that particular design, the pumps themselves are actually above ground and located in the building, so we had to stretch the building about six and a half feet in order to accommodate the pumps to put those inside the building. So in this particular case, the generator, all the electrical equipment, as well as the pumps themselves, are all located in the structure. Again, a small pull-off area, and again, to minimize the impact to the property, we've only got about 10 feet from the front of the building to the edge of the building.
Here, I got it all, here, right here.
I'm, I'm sorry, where's the house in this case?
You got all of them?
Yeah.
Like that too?
It's switched north and south. It's back here. I want to...
You got that one?
Yeah.
There was an easement sheet that was submitted. That shows that a little bit better.
Distance there?
Oh, okay.
So here's the easement plan.
Do you estimate the distance between the station and the house?
250 to 300 feet away.
Thank you.
That's all?
I'm probably a little low, too.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's three to four.
Is there, and besides that house of the owner, are there any other houses that are closer?
There's a house behind, that's on, it's a deer pedal, house that's street behind. There is a fence in their, in their backyard.
What's the approximate distance?
So from the actual building itself to the back property line is probably 100 feet or so.
I mean, you're going to have two sources of noise, you're going to have pumps, and then you're going to have the generator, correct?
Correct.
Whereas you don't have pumps in the other stations.
And the other sta...
Pumps are above the ground.
The other stations, the pumps are submerged under the wastewater, correct.
And how often in a 24-hour period, if you know, will these pumps be operating?
That all depends on, it's a great question, it all depends on how many houses are connected. So this whole system is designed to not only serve Phase Two, at least the area that's tributary to this, but there'll be a future Phase Three further upstream that will feed down into these two pumping stations as well.
When it's fully operative?
Fully operational, they'll typically, the pumps will turn on, you know, several times an hour, say three or four times an hour.
And, um...
Run for a few minutes.
I think I know the answer to the question, but has anyone ever done a decibel count to determine the noise that's generated from something like this?
Uh, my experience has been, you, you don't typically get noise complaints from pumping stations.
Full pumping stations above ground?
Correct, this is relatively isolated, I, you know, the closest home, as you mentioned, is behind, there are no near neighbors across the street, and the, the subject property, 113, the house is, is quite a distance away, so certainly having everything in the building will help with the noise attenuation, and I, I, these pumps are generally very loud to begin with.
That's, that's my, really my concern when it's a fully operative. I do know Howard's does have a decibel bylaw, I believe, or some, something like that, so I guess if that's an issue...
Not familiar with that, but...
They'll be back here.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Hopefully, we won't find out the hardware.
Mr. Chesley will take care of that. I have no further questions.
Ms. Muller?
No questions.
Mr. Hedersted?
Nothing, thank you.
I have no question. Armstrong, Mr. Capoli.
Just, just a follow-up on, on Mr. Hilliard's question, that is, because these are above ground, if there was a noise complaint, you know, what would you be able to do to address that? Or what would you be willing to do on the record to address that?
Well, ultimately, would the town be willing to do, we could certainly take a look at it and advise them, whether it's adding more insulation to the, to the doors, particularly potentially, if that would help cut down on the noise. But the building itself will be insulated, so it's precast concrete structure with insulation, so it's something that we can take a look at if it does become an issue and whatever the town needs to do.
Okay, anyone in the public want to speak? Roy.
Roy Tewilliger, again, I thought I heard you say that the size of the building was going to be 23 feet by something. The plans that I was given show the building to be 17 feet by 14. Is it 23 or is it 17?
So this particular, that may be an old plan you have, sir, so...
Just got it last, a couple of weeks ago.
Originally, originally, that, that building was the same size as the other structures, which is 17 by 14. Because this is now going to be a suction lift type station, it's now 14 by 23 and a half.
Well, I went in, I went in to get copies of everything that was associated with this particular question, and that's what they gave me, so now it's 23 feet instead of 17. I'm not too happy about that. The other question I said earlier is that I think the closest house to this station is on Marshview, number eight Marshview, and his backyard is right next to that. I, I admit that the person that lives on Church Street is pretty far away, because his lot is long and narrow, and you got this at one end, but I'm surprised that somebody from Marshview hasn't made some comments about how close this is to them.
And how far away is that house these gentlemen is referring to, approximately? Is it 100 feet?
I think 70, 70 to 80 feet.
Really?
Really.
To the back of the building, it's roughly 75.
75.
To the property line or to the house?
To the house itself.
The house is almost on the property line from drawing I've got.
Mr. Tewilliger, is this Murray's Marshview that you're referring to? Are they the...
I just hear a question?
The, is this the Murray's property on Marshview that you're concerned about?
I don't know the name of the, the people, I'm talking about number eight Marshview, I think it's number eight.
Number, oh, okay, yeah, sorry, different name.
Right, right behind the pumping station.
Right.
If the dimensions that were made available to the public were not correct, then you've got a due process issue, you might have to go back to that one.
There were updated plans that were, that were submitted on, I believe it was Wednesday last week, that, that had that, the 23-foot by 14-foot dimension that might have been too.
Your easement is big enough to cover that?
Yes, correct, yes, yes.
And the, the setback didn't change?
Right.
The setback was, the setback is the same, and that's the relief we're seeking, that didn't change. So the note, the public noticed everything was, was right for due note, for due process.
Any further discussion? Wait, any further comments from the public? No? I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Who moved?
We need the first one.
Wait, who moved? I'll move to close the public hearing, they're all asleep. Mr. Hilliard, second, hearing closed. Any discussion?
Do you have a general voice?
Well, I'll entertain a motion in the case. Mr. Hilliard, why don't you?
I move.
You've got the thing down now.
Sure. I move to approve the variance as requested in case number 2019 dash 23 for the property located at 13 Church Street, map 88, parcel T six, to allow the pumping station to be closer to the property line than required by the Howard zoning bylaw.
And we need a use permit.
And I also move with, move for this, in the same motion, to approve the request for special permit for the defined essential services to construct a wastewater pumping station within the setbacks as executed through the Board of Selectment's Phase Two Sewer and Sewer Pumping Station easements.
Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Hedersted, any discussion by the board?
Yes, I'm just curious, I see that the Church Street South station at 24 Church Street, the plan was by, prepared by SMC, the other three, including this one, it's CDM Smith, and there's more in the way of landscape notes. What's the significance of that?
So there are two sets of plans, there are ones that CDM Smith submitted, that are the actual site plans, that show the building itself, the ones prepared by SMC were the easement drawings. So there are two sets of drawings for each, for each pumping station, correct?
Okay, so I'm looking at the other, okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Special permit and variance granted. Mr. Hilliard, you can go ahead and call the next...
Case number, excuse me, case 2019 twenty-fourth, property is located at 1404 Orleans Road, map 86, parcel M sixteen dash one, in the CH dash two zoning district, owner JP Hatrick, LLC.
Okay, just once more for the record, identify yourselves.
I'm sorry, I was just wondering if they were hockey players, the owners, JP Hatrick. And Amy Questle, KP Law, Town Council.
Griffin Rider, Town Engineer.
Mike Judice, CDM Smith.
Okay, thank you. Got the general view, so we can go right to the specifics.
Who's voting on this one? Mr. Ryer, who's voting?
Ah, thank you. Mr. Hilliard, Ms. Muller, Mr. Hedersted, Mr. Donahue, and Mr. Armstrong. This is the Spences Trace?
Correct.
Yes, so the property officially is 1404 Orleans Road, Spences Trace, because the access will actually be off of Spences Trace, which is a little cul-de-sac. Again, same idea, we tried to minimize the impact to the property, this happens to be actually a commercial property, it's a zone CH two, in order to maximize, we tried to minimize the impact of the property, so they maximize its future use there. We tried to put this building as close to the street as possible, we have a small turnout, again, this is the same size as the first building, 14 by 17 feet, include the generator and the electrical equipment inside the building.
What's the dock area in this, in this, both the, the site plan and the, both site plans, is the dock area in the front of this pumping station?
So that's a, a small paved area, so the town's maintenance vehicles can get off of the road, so we...
But none of them, none of, none of the other places showed that.
They, they all have a small pull-off driveways.
They had a little driveway there.
So the, the, the two on Church Street had more of a perpendicular driveway, it's sort of an L-shaped, this one and this one has more of just a pull-off.
Oh, there was, yeah, some of them had bigger ones, okay, I understand now.
Correct.
All right, so that's just access.
Just to let the maintenance vehicles get out of the traveled way to get off the road.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Not much.
Anyone?
Questions.
Muller, question?
Yes. Is, are there any residential homes or houses in this immediate area? And if there are, what's the distance?
There are, there's this one up here, and I look at the easement plan, it's quite a distance away, several, several hundred feet. And then there are two properties across the street. We tried to locate it sort of along the property line between the houses, so it wasn't directly facing any one particular house.
Okay.
So here, you can see in the site plan, the bottom left, the outline, a partial outline of one of the structures across the street. There's nothing else on this side of the street heading out to Orleans Road. It's all vacant property.
Thank you.
Anybody in the public would like to speak to this case? No? All right, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Armstrong, public hearing closed. Motion in the case.
I move to approve the variance as requested by the town of Howard to allow a pumping station to be closer to the lot line than required by the zoning bylaw. We got property at fourteen zero four Orleans Road, MAP eighty-six, parcel M sixteen dash one, and to allow a special permit as requested by the town of Howard for defined essential services to construct a wastewater pumping station within the setback as executed through the Board of Selectment's Phase Two Sewer and Sewer Pump Station easement.
Second?
Seconded.
Mr. Hedersted, any discussion by the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Special permit and variance granted. Go ahead, Mr. Hilliard.
Case number two nineteen dash twenty-five, property located at two forty-six Route one thirty-seven, MAP ninety-six, parcel A six, in the RR zoning district, owners Muriel Woodland.
Good evening, Amy Questle, KP Law Town Council.
Griffin Rider, town engineer.
Mike Judice, CDM Smith.
Great, thank you. Last time.
Who's voting?
Oh, everyone.
Yeah, this is, except for the forty Bs, we never go this late.
Voting.
Yes, who's voting? Mr. Hilliard, Ms. Muller, Mr. Hedersted, Mr. Donahue, and Mr. Armstrong. This is rather unusual, isn't it? It's not. What is, is this a very unique configuration? This one?
So I'll just give you a quick overview. It is a very large and deep lot. So this is Route one thirty-seven, right across from the southern leg of Sherwood Road. So once again, we tried to, tried to keep the easement and the station itself as close to the property line as we could to maximize the potential future use. It is a vacant lot.
Is it a residential zone or a commercial?
This is all residential. It's RR. So you should have a copy of the easement plan that shows the configuration of the lot. It is about six hundred and thirty feet deep, and a hundred and fifty feet wide.
But, 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 maybe I got this, where, Route one thirty-seven? What is this? Yeah, one thirty-seven, should have an easement plan as well. Uh, slope, slope.
So the distance from the station to the nearest resident, residential facility or...
So the lot just to the northwest of the site is developed. The house sits quite a ways back from the street. The nearest properties are actually across one thirty-seven on the two corners of Sherwood Road.
Okay.
Those are the closest proximity, and those are probably a hundred feet away or so.
Had there been any discussion with the partners who are not, whose land you're not putting it on, but who in any potential could, well, there was notification, right? Three hundred feet?
Notice, yeah.
Correct.
Okay, fine. What's around my question?
Ms. Muller, if I want it.
No questions.
Mr. Hedersted. I'm just trying to understand, this drawing I've got in front of me, the plan, because it, I've never seen this one before. You've got two buildings, I guess.
No, it's one building.
What's the, what's the dark section called slope and, and...
Driveway.
Was that a driveway?
That again is a little driveway.
That's a driveway that goes in between them. You got a building on the right-hand side. What is that?
So that's the building that we've talked about and shown, actually. So here's, I can have a, I do have a rendering of that one as well, same building that we looked at.
Yeah, okay, and so what's, what's on the left-hand side and around it?
So...
It's where the pump is, apparently.
That's where the pump is. That's a below-grade structure. It's a slab.
Oh, it's below grade.
Each of the stations have that. That's the wet well. I did not point that out earlier. I apologize.
Okay, thank you. That's no wonder I couldn't see it. Okay, that's below ground.
Correct.
Okay, I have no questions.
I have no questions.
Mr. Armstrong?
No questions.
Mr. Capoli?
Yes, sir.
Anyone in the audience like to speak? No? I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Donahue, public hearing closed. I'll take a motion in the case.
I move to approve the, excuse me, variance requested by the town of Howard with respect to property located at two forty-six Route one thirty-seven, MAP ninety-six, parcel A six, to allow variance in placement of a pumping station within, pumping station closer to the property line than required by the zoning bylaw, and to allow a special permit for defined essential services to construct a wastewater pumping station within the setbacks as executed through the Board of Selectment's Phase Two Sewer and Sewer Pump Station easements.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Ms. Muller, any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, variance and special permit?
Thank you.
Granted? Thank you, all.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cogent presentation and short.
Attorney counsel, will you be doing these four decisions on these?
Where are the other two...
What about perks and ports? Do you want me to do that one or? I would love it.
Where are the other two pumping stations that you didn't need to come to us for?
So there is one that I mentioned that does not have a building associated with it. That's on Huckleberry Path, sort of right in the circle, if you're familiar with the road, is it?
Yep.
The big circle.
Well, it's generally...
Right in the edge of that, so that will just have, because it's only serving around twenty homes, we don't need a generator there, so that'll just have an electrical pedestal. The second one is at the bottom of Sugar Hill Drive, the corner of Sugar Hill and Nickerson, and that's within the town right of way.
What about, are you gonna put one on Harden, down at the bottom of Harden?
Harden, smaller station, that's essentially a grinder, essentially, that's a grinder pumping station, so that's, no above-grade structures, there's a very small electrical pedestal. That's only serving six homes.
Thank you.
So no structures associated with that, and that's in the middle of the cul-de-sac, so that'd be a town, on the town.
I've got a button missing.
Yes. I'm town property, town pumping station.
No. Great, thank you.
I think it's great cleaning up Pleasant Bay.
My suits that have these buttons.
Fully but surely.
I don't button the last one. If I'm unable to, I don't. If I'm able to, I don't.
Do you have a motion for ten minutes?
Okay, yeah, we're not gonna reorganize that. I can do that next month. Well, it's too late.
So I'll take this drive any day.
Thank you, all. Did anyone have any comments on the minutes from the last meeting?
None for me.
None? Okay, I have a motion to approve the minutes.
So move.
Second, we have, all in favor?
My second.
Mr. Chesley is about to approach. Motion to approach.
Come up to our bar, belly up to the bar, boys.
And everybody else? Motion should adjourn.
Motion, yeah, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So move.
Second.
You didn't put it in any... Thank you, all.
Amy.
I'll see you guys.
I was serious about the rule eleven.
I know, I, yeah, I'll try my hardest. I have three cases, well, he's gonna, yeah, this one, so now I'll...
Mr. Brackett senior's point was emphatic and...
Of course you will. Seriously, they're wasting the town's time and money.
I'm sure we have.
They should pay for that. That's what they should do.
Thank you.
Why, why doesn't the taxpayer pay for that?
I went three times.
I think I'm bad luck, because I covered town meeting when it was one AM.
You can handle the structure from here on out, right? I think so. I did see you at town meeting. You got the message.
Town meeting.
Late night at the port.